It is 6:00 PM on April 25th, 2024. Welcome to the Parowan City Council meeting. Thank you all for being here tonight. We appreciate you. And we're going to start this evening with an opening prayer and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our very own Councilman Dean.
Oh, God, she threw my other bus. Kleenex. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this beautiful city that we live in. We thank thee for the citizens, the businesses, and especially this beautiful area that has been blessed for our enjoyment. We blessed this meeting tonight that it will be ran in a positive, but also discuss some issues and maybe some problems that need to be talked about. We thank thee again for everything you've given us, and we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Mr. Jerry here, Saint Bob.
Thank you. All right, we'll move now into Declaration of Conflicts with or personal interest in any of the agenda items by the City Council members.
No mayor.
No.
No mayor.
Okay, thank you. Now, we'll go into our public comment section. So, this is not the public hearing. We're going to start with public comments, and these are, this is your time to share any concerns, solutions, ideas with the council. These comments will be limited to three minutes each, and so I'll open that time up to you now.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Recently, the City Council has been in discussion, oh, but my name, Susan Seppi, Parowan resident.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Almost forgot. Recently, the City Council has been in discussion to reverse the past City Council's decision to assess the increase in power costs over time. As I understand it, Parowan City paid $800,000 plus, an increase initially as they did not desire to overburden the power users due to the unstable economic conditions that have transpired during the past three years. Currently, the balance, as I understand it, is around $600,000 plus or minus. Is this council setting precedence by reversing the fiscal decision of the past council and negating their decision, which I am sure was given much discussion and concern? I would like the opportunity to voice my opinion regarding this matter. As I do not wish nor desire to pay more for electricity, I believe the past City Council, in their wisdom, understood the terrible economic conditions that we Americans have faced and continue to face under the current administration in Washington. We all have been to the gas station, the grocery store, witnessed an increased evaluation by our county assessor, and it seems that everything we consume has doubled in price. Whether rich or poor, you have witnessed the devastating impact this negative economy has had regarding our finances, including the city's finances. While speaking of finances, Parowan is a very small town. We have limited financial resources. We are not nearly the size of Cedar City, nor do we want to be. Parowan has aging infrastructure that on any given day, a catastrophic failure can happen to any portion of that infrastructure. And should we not have budgeted for these failures, where will these monies come from? As adults and parents of children, have we not instilled in our children to save money for a rainy day? We try to make our children fiscally responsible so as when they become adults, they stand on their own two feet. Life has a way of turning our lives upside down at one time or another. This is the same with government. Parowan does not have an extreme amount of expendable cash to be given a handout to its power customers. Last Friday, July 19th, Biden had decided to ban fossil fuel drilling on nearly half of the National Petroleum Reserve in Alaska. He has also depleted our national oil reserves. He announced a new rule elevating conservation on public land uses such as grazing, mining, and other energy development. Do you not know what this ultimately means? It means that energy costs are going to rise dramatically. When power rates double, will Parowan be footing the bill for these terrible decisions imposed by this administration on Americans? My guess is probably not. If you did that, it would bankrupt our town. As I stated before, I do not desire to pay more for power, but as consumers of this commodity, we cannot expect the city to bear this burden to its peril. The amount we are paying back is a percentage based on our monthly power consumption. As with every other item we consume, if power becomes too expensive, you cut back on power usage. When gasoline becomes too expensive, you plan your errands in a more fiducious manner. As in my analogy of saving for a rainy day, it is raining in Parowan. It is raining in America, and based on the irresponsible decisions of our elected officials, and I don't mean you, the rain is turning into a hurricane. Based on the aforementioned restrictions on our energy, we can be assured of one thing, power rates will be increasing. The chairman of JP Morgan stated late last week that inflation is rising, interest rates will be increasing, and recession is imminent. Therefore, I'm asking you to uphold the decision of the past council and continue to collect the monies put forward by Parowan on behalf of its power customers. In my opinion, the best business practice is to pay back the city for monies they have expended on behalf of its power customers. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got up to this mic because I'm taking off my hat as a city manager for a minute. Out here in the hall, there is, I'm a Cedar Redman, I'm not a Parowan Ram, but there's a, there's a Parowan Rams thing which this council voted to support. This is what it says, "As a community, we resolve to be true Rams. As a community, we will find ways to work together and to support each other. As a community, we will help educate and inform the public of our roles and responsibilities. As a community, we will look for ways to build community spirit, support our community servants, and make Parowan strong." I've seen some, in this job, I deal with people at the height of emotion, and I always recognize that, when they're frustrated, when they're mad, and sometimes I let them know they've maybe crossed the line, and they maybe apologize later, maybe they don't, and I say, "I understand. I get that." I get to be sometimes the face of government, which I, I'm not a big government fan, and I always say, "I'm not going to, I'm not going to defend government. I can talk about what we're doing in Parowan." But I've seen some truly despicable behavior this last two weeks that I want to appeal to Parowan and ask, "What is our character?" We have somebody at our library that works there who is going through the fight of her She told me I could talk about it. Last week, she was sick, we had to close the library that day. We had a citizen come in, "No, they're not a transplant. No, they're not a younger generation." Core Parowan people throwing books on the floor, raising their voice, and mentioning, "Maybe somebody should go active shooter in this place. Maybe it'll be me." After finding out that our person is very sick, same family came in today and said, "Good, maybe she'll die. We could get rid of her." I don't want to work in a city if that's the way we're going to act. I'm sorry, but this is real. We, we can work through hard things, we can have disagreements, we can disagree with people, we can even have grudges, and I would encourage everybody to work through those grudges. But is Parowan a better place to live? Are we an example? Or are we just like the cesspool that is Facebook and what it is doing to our country? I know that that's not everybody. I know that that was some people that were, I don't know what's going on in their lives. But we can disagree better. Sorry, Spencer Cox, I just stole that. We've had some hard times. We, we're going to disagree on things tonight, and that's okay. That's healthy. Like, it's okay to have problems and to discuss things and to have issues, but we can do it. We can remember that we are dealing with another human being. If we get pulled over by a police person and we're really not happy with them, remember they have a family at home. Remember, they're putting their life on the line. When you go in because you're really frustrated about your power bill, or that farmer who's, "We got a problem with them and their water versus the city and their water," let's try to keep our civility, let's try to keep our humanity, let's disagree better, let's respect each other, and let's, let's honor this thing that is Parowan strong. I've been so impressed by it. I'm sorry to go there, but I couldn't be silent anymore. I just needed to make appeal to everybody's civility, and I only wanted to point out the worst, and I didn't point him out by name. So, anyways, that's my comment. I will put my city manager hat back on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll now move into our public hearing, and we need a motion to do that.
I'd move to go into the public hearing.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, this public hearing is to provide information and receive input regarding long-term plans for restricting 200 West to one-way traffic during certain hours of the day to accommodate dropping off and picking up elementary school children. And your comments, if you could please limit them to three minutes. The public hearing is now open.
Mayor, do you want me to give some background?
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. I just want to give some background as to some timeline. This, this came rather quickly. In fact, I bet you guys found out about it after it happened. Maybe you knew a minute before the council, I don't know.
Not me.
This construction project that the school is doing has been known about for some time. It was approved in a bond some time ago. We did not know until a very short order of time what the, what their plan was when the contractor rolled in and said, "This is, this is what we're going to do." The school reached out to the city and said, "We have got to solve a potential children's safety issue, or we're going to have a problem on our hands." So, myself, Public Works Director, our great police chief, who else was there? Addie? Both, both of the principals, I was just trying to think from the city perspective first.
Me.
And, no, and Rick.
Public Works, I was there.
Public Works, Mayor.
Little from the school.
Were you there?
I was.
We met, we, we talked it through, we, we found out that the area where the kids were going to be dropped off was going to be ground zero for where the construction crews were going to be working, and literally, they were going to cut off an, an area that is, that is used for circulation. And, and so, we put together a plan. It is a temporary plan. It is a plan to, really designed to move the drop-off zone away from where the construction is going to be happening. The, the whole reason is for children's safety. We were worried that this was going to be basically almost no lead time for the parents, but that was the timeline that we were faced with. So, the city, the, the school district put out a, an email and said, "This is the, this is the new plan." The city shared it. We really didn't have a lot of lead time, and we had everybody there that we could get there to help, to help everybody learn the new circulation patterns. The city's role is not have anything to do with construction. Believe it or not, we actually don't have any oversight, even from a building inspection or, or approval of code or any of that, over the school district. There's a state code that allows the school districts to basically be independent of the local building authority. They're still held by state code and building code and all of that stuff, but when they do a construction project, the city's building authority is not over them. They bring in inspectors that are, that are approved and hired, the same thing with the county. If the county does something in this, in our municipality, they can choose to have us be their building inspector, but usually, they, they hire their own, or if, if like the county, they do their own. So, the, the school district reached out to us just from a traffic perspective, asking how we could help with this. The solution was found. We talked through a bunch of different iterations, what could we do, the problems that there were going to be, and decided that the best option would be to move the school pickup and drop-off zone to 100 West. And as we looked at it, we thought, you're going to have cars going every which way and turning around, and kids being dropped off, trying to cross, and we did not want to have a child get hit, especially under a new, a new plan. Everybody's been dropping kids off the way they have for all these years, and we're, we're dropping on them very quickly. So, we looked at the model that they use in Enoch, which is at Enoch Elementary, and they take up one of the road, which is right where their drop-off zone is, and they make it temporarily one-way during the drop-off period. In fact, they leave it that way all day long as a one-way street, and then after the kids are picked up, they make it a two-way street open again. And so, we, and, and that model has worked for Enoch. If you talk to Enoch, you talk to the crossing guards, you talk to the school, you talk to the, the city, it's worked really well. They said it was very difficult at first, there was a lot of angst, there was a lot of, you know, discussion and everything about it, and since it's been in practice for years, how long, Addison?
Six years.
Six years. They love it. Even the people that live on this street have grown to like it. It actually makes their road one of the least traveled roads. Their traffic actually goes way down. Outside of those drop-off and pickup hours, sorry, Chief Adams, drop-off and pickup hours, it's, it's very, not very much of an impact because it, because it's the elementary school kids, so it's like 8:30, so most of them, if they work, they've gone to work by the time that this thing happens, and then it's again at 3:30, give or take, 2:30.
Here, it's 2:30.
2:30. It's here, it's 2:30.
Yeah, and we go to school at 8:00.
Oh, my gosh.
It's okay.
I don't know these things. So, but it's, but it's that window of time in the morning, window of time in the afternoon, and, and that works really well. So, we said, "Let's temporarily do this, and for sure, during the construction period, let's give that a shot to see if that would be a successful way, especially to, to keep kids safe." We knew that it would be a tricky thing. We knew that the first day, two, three, four, it was going to be a bit of a challenge, which is why we had so many people on site, both from the school and from the city. We had our school resource officer, we had our chief there, we had our crossing guards all in the queue, and we were directing people. There were some friction, there were some, some confusion, some misunderstandings, even though we got the information out the best we could. So, we are where we are. Where we are as of right now is we are shutting off one block to one-way only traffic during school hours. What we're ultimately, we wanted to get input from the public, we wanted to get feedback. Our intent, at least at this point, is to continue to do this at least as long as the construction. Our intent is also to put in, if you guys like to, some sort of a turnstile that can be, rather than moving barricades out and signs out and putting them back and moving them out, put in like a turnstile, it's the way they do it in Enoch. The crossing guard, when they show up before the, before the, everything starts, they close the road to one-way traffic only, and then at the end of the day, when they go back and do crossing guard duty, they open it back up. One, one potential version of this that I would think that we could change if we wanted to is only have it one-way during the time the crossing guard is there, and open it back up again during the day. In Enoch, they keep it closed the whole day during school hours, and then, of course, they open it back up. So, that's what happened. I know it didn't go super perfect, but I think that it's since gotten a lot better as people have learned the new rotation and all of that stuff. So, that's the background. I didn't know, I haven't really even spoken to hardly any of the council, gave you guys an update on it, but that's, that's why we did what we did and where we're at.
Councilmember Topham, you've been out there. What is your experience with it?
Personally, I like it just because the, for me, I feel like it's more safe. How we had it before, like where we have, because we're so fortunate to have the elementary, a vocational building, and then the high school is right there. So, we have a lot of student drivers. Not saying anything bad about them. I have one myself, a newly, a new driver. And we had kindergarten for second grade that would come out in that walkway to be picked up by their parents with student drivers coming and going. To me, that's, the way that we've got it now, divert it all pickup and drop off to the one side of the school, and then the buses come in the front of the school in the little turnabout, so the bus students just get right on, right off the sidewalk, parents can pick up down the side. I feel like it, like the first week, yeah, it was hectic, and there were some not happy people, but I think talking with people, explaining the reasons why, I feel like it's going pretty good right now. I mean...
I gotta add one more thing. I, I know this impacts those that live on that street more than anybody else.
Right.
We, we're effectively taking your street and turning it to a one-way street and increasing traffic on it during certain hours of the day, and I, I know that that's a big impact. We did, we did drop off a letter, again, with a short amount of time, we didn't have much time, but I, I do want to acknowledge the fact that we know that this is an impact, and that's why we wanted to have a public hearing about it.
Okay. Chief Adams, did you have anything you wanted to add? I don't know if he's listening.
He didn't hear you.
Did you have anything you wanted to add regarding the, being able to do that, to do the, the changes to the street from a city perspective or a public safety, yeah? Yes, thank you.
And I just want to give a shout out to our police department. They have been out there, especially that first week. I loved hanging out with the chief every morning for an entire week. It was actually quite fun for me.
Way fun, aren't I?
You are way fun.
I think it's going well. The first week was the roughest. It is hands, hands down safer the way it's being done right now. Most of the problems that, that are happening now are because of the parents that just don't want to have to go that extra block, or it, it ends up being from the longest distance, a third of a mile to go around. The, the only problem we really are seeing is the people that just want to cheat the system and don't want to have to jump through the hoops and follow the rules, and the parents that are urging their kids to run across the street instead of going and getting in the line and going and picking them up. But I, I think it's working really well. I don't know. Do you have any questions for me?
No, I just wanted to know your perspective because you've been out there every day.
Not this week.
Not this week, that first week.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one concern. You mentioned about maybe making it only part of the day, and the rest of the day, you open it up for both ways. My concern is if you do that, then people are going to kind of get used to it. If you have it one-way consistently all the time, they're eventually going to get used to that, and then it'll eventually become a habit. Otherwise, you may get some issues where you have it, you know, kind of back and forth.
And I think, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, it, we, we do have a great model, and it's right, right down there. In, in Enoch, pretty much, people stay away from the street unless they're, they're going to go and drop kids off. If you ever go near there, I, I just naturally just take a different road if I'm going to cross any, that way. Even when it's opened up to, to two-way traffic, I still know that it's, it's weird. It's like it puts something in my mind that I'm like, "I'm just going to stay away because I know that there's, that there's drop-off," and it, it's just more of a drop-off zone. But opening it up to two-way, I think, is important outside of school hours because, I mean, you have the whole summer, you have, you have weekends, you have holidays when the school, when there's no need for it that way, and, and it is, you know, it is people's property that you're impacting. So, I, I think the, I think the public, we hate change, like, we really hate change. Everybody hates change. I heard a funny saying that said, "The only buddy that likes to change is, is a baby with a wet diaper." We hate change, and, but we get used to things, and, and, and sometimes we don't get used to it because there's a real fundamental problem. But I, I really think people would get used to, if they see the barrier out, it's one-way. When the barrier is open, they just deal with it. But that's my personal opinion.
But didn't you say Enoch leaves it closed?
They do leave it closed during the day.
During the day?
Just school days.
Okay.
They, 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 they close the road in the morning, the crossing guard, and then when the crossing guard in the afternoon gets done, they open the road.
Okay. See, I didn't understand that.
And that's what we've been doing by moving barricades and signs.
Okay. Well, I can see that.
And I think the only reason we were discussing possibly, like, when the kids are in school, opening it back up, is because some of the residents on that street didn't like it closed. So, then we were just trying, trying to compromise and find solutions to mitigate those problems. Right now, we just have it, the block, the one block, and I don't know how chief even likes this, but personally, I would like to see it all the way, all the way down the block.
To 300?
How far?
All the way down to the block to the corner, not just to...
So, two blocks?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I know that would impact more homes, but this is, this is just my reasoning. It's why I feel like maybe we should look at that. It's just because, so, parents have to come down 200 from 100, so, in front of the elementary, they turn down 200, and they start to go down, and then you can park along the fence. Your kids will come out. There is a road that comes up, I don't know what the number of that road is.
200 north.
200 north. So, then they're coming up that little middle street, and then, or the people coming down from the end of the block are coming up and being like, "Oh, I can't find parking right there." So, then that's when they're going around the barricade and parking on the other side. So, if we, my feeling is, is if we made the whole street just one-way during school hours, nobody's going to be coming up backwards up the other side, if that makes sense.
So, you're talking 100 to 300?
Yes, just do it two blocks.
Okay.
Now, if you guys don't like that, that's fine. I'm just, I mean, and I don't know what Principal Heaton likes either. I mean, I think it could probably work either way, but that's what I've been seeing. I don't know, it's probably gotten a little bit better the last few weeks, where people are starting to realize that maybe we don't want to extend it all the way down. But that was just my thought, is keep the whole way, they could still come up that 200 north, or whatever that street is.
Yeah.
And, and then they would just have to turn left, and then they could still park along the fence, but everybody on that whole street would all just be traveling the same way, and it wouldn't be confusing, like, just stopping one block.
So, so the...
I don't know.
The problem with that, where they can still come up to that T-intersection, if you, if you, to make that work, you'd need to put some kind of a left turn only...
Right, on that.
Sign, so that's one more thing to set up.
Right.
I think you're still going to have the people that just need to beat the system are going to still...
You do.
Go right there and go across and, and do the same thing they're doing now. We thought it, we even looked at maybe blocking the road off during the day, but then we got emergency vehicles that might need to get through. We can't close the road off completely like that. So, for what, I mean, that's just some concerns I would have. The reason I came back up is, in Enoch, I live really close to that area, and it was more like 10 years, sorry, Principal Heaton.
He was probably teaching out there then.
You were, weren't you? Oh, yeah, so it was a lot longer than six years ago. The, the people that live there, and that have consistently lived there, that hated it in the beginning and were fighting it and fighting having this road closed off, is great for them now because there's less than one-half the traffic of normal going down that street, yet they got to maybe circle a block to get to their place, but it just puts that much less traffic going past their place. It's impactful during drop-off and pickup, but for the rest of the school day, having it closed off, they actually like it. I think if you tried to open it during the school day and then close it again, you got a couple of things. You're going to have somebody that has to do it twice a day at each gate.
Right.
And you're going to have the people that, it's just not muscle memory, that they can't go down. Like, it, eventually, it gets ingrained in to... you got a couple of things. You're gonna have somebody that has to do it twice a day at each gate.
Right.
Um, and you're gonna have the people that it's just not muscle memory, that they can't go down. Like, it- eventually, it gets ingrained into all the locals and around, and- and you will again have the people that will be like, "Oh, it's almost two thirty. If I hurry now, I can beat the gate being closed, and they'll still come that way," and I- I think it'd be better to just leave it for the school day, like you were talking about.
That's what I was alluding to.
Right, I kinda felt like that's what you were getting to.
You just said it better.
I thought you m- I thought you meant permanently turn it to a one-way road, Dave.
What?
I thought you meant permanently turn it to a one-way road.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I just meant that, uh, if you're opening it and closing it during the day, it's just like Chief Adams eloquently expressed that you're gonna have some people with a memory loss, so.
I was there yesterday morning, and- and it went pretty smooth. I have to apologize to the principal. I talked- talked to him about thirty minutes. He probably should've got back to work, but, um, but yeah, it (cough) to me, it- it seemed, and I was there in the afternoon, you know, it's a little congested, but it- it's a learning process.
Sure.
And, uh, there's only three people that cheated, so.
We may change it again. I mean- I mean, we may have to tweak it and make little changes. It's all a learning process, too. So, but I think it's working well.
So, um, I've- I've been trying to go out there every day because I am- my main concern is-
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
Sorry, Trevor Heaton, sorry. I- I haven't been to a council meeting for a while, so, um-
And what is your role?
I'm the principal at- at Parowan Elementary.
Are you sure?
I-
Thank you. I just didn't know if people-
I'm not in charge, but I'm the principal. Rochelle, she- and those other ladies there, they've- they- they run the building most likely. But, um, I've been out there every day, and- and number one, um, very supportive community, very few complaints, and the people that have called in, I try to get back to them and talk to them about possible solutions and things we can do better, 'cause there's nothing better than feedback. I do apologize, this was quick. I think it was too soon. Um, but once we found out it was, we met with, uh, the district people, we- we- it was brought up to the school board. They came to the last council meeting and presented it. We tried to talk about the best solutions, and I can tell you from my standpoint right now, the way we're doing it now without the buses and the pickup and drop off altogether, kids running between the buses, when you can't see a kid between the buses, people pulling in and out from both sides, people not staying out of the bus zone even though it was marked. This was years of going out there and saying, "You guys can't be in the bus zone," but we're still pulling in the bus zone. So, the bus zone be- being very clear, and no one's coming in and out of there, that's way safer for the bus kids. Then is if you ever dropped off or picked up, we sent teachers there every single day to that other side, and almost daily, people were saying, "I'm worried we're gonna get a kid hit," 'cause we got student drivers, we got parents rolling in, and then they get frustrated, and then they try to pull out around with- with that thing. That was extremely dangerous now. That- that being said, I do like the location. What I've noticed, 'cause I've tried to go out there every day that I'm at the school, and what I've noticed lately is it's gotten smoother. What I've also noticed is I timed things. So, at two thir- uh, drop off is great because it's staggered. So, when ki- people are dropping off their kids, they go out and they go down that street, and they're doing it at different times. There's no traffic. They can just drop off and go. There's no congestion. It- it hasn't been a problem that I've seen at all now. What happens at two twenty is everybody goes down there and parks their car to wait for their kids, which is normal. I'm not gonna blame people for that problem at two hundred west. The p- the thing that they do is, they drive up in there on that one way, I mean, on the two-way street, on the other side, and we wanna make sure always that they're on that other side of the street. Well, they're coming up looking for a place to park, and they don't wanna- I don't think they think about pulling in clear down there past the, like, where those houses are, clear down that corner, so they just pull up a little further, and pretty soon, they're like, "There's no more spots." So, now you get to the block off, and you're like, "What do I do?" I don't know what to do, because if I flip around here, I'm in the wrong place. If I pull in here, I don't know what to do. So, they wait there, and most of them, actually, when somebody pulls out, they pull in, take a spot, and pick up their kids on that side. Now, there are people that park on this side, get out of their car, and they go and grab their kid and walk them across the street. There are a few that let their kids walk, but we've been really careful to try to tell them. The easiest way to solve this is I timed at two thirty-five, half the cars are gone. That's five minutes after we let out of school. So, half of those cars are gone. So, there is pl- plenty of places to pull in and pull out. At two forty, about two forty-one, there's like five cars left lined up on that side. So, just a- and- and people are already starting to catch on, so they're coming about five minutes later. And since then, we don't have the problem with the one-way all the way down because people have plenty of places to pull in, pick up their kids. So, I think as people start to figure this out, they're gonna figure out, "If I come five minutes later, it's not really a problem." As far as the other thing, I guess we'd need to look at that. I don't like to- there's five more houses on that side of the street if we make the whole street one-way. That- that puts a lot of people at a disadvantage that I wouldn't want affected. And really, if the traffic isn't as bad, and we stagger that a little bit, I don't think that comes into play as much, from what I've seen. Um, the part that I see for parents is for pa- it's a lot safer for kids, 'cause they're picking up on that side of the street. All the kids load on that side, and that's our expectation. I don't want kids to get run over crossing the street. That's safer. The thing is, for parents, though, if you're pulling in and coming out, that- that is, with that many cars there, you have to be really careful and cautious, 'cause you don't wanna bump into each other as people are coming down. And I think maybe we need to put fifteen mile, ten mile an hour sign during pickup and drop off on that street so that people aren't speeding down there. I've seen a few cars going about thirty miles an hour while people are backing in and out, and that's dangerous. But that's more of a parent concern than a- than- than the- but that's what I've seen. That's my observation, and- and I am- I've had some great calls from people, some of you, that have talked to me about this. And we've got flaggers now from Big D. Big D has flaggers on that-
Right, because that was a- a concern, um, on Friday, and Big D just didn't realize. Kids got out early on Friday, 'cause they hadn't been there on Fridays, and they were trying to back in a truck, and parents were concerned that their kids may get hit by that, and they were so apologetic.
They apologized, and they also said they're not gonna back in there. They're gonna pull in and then turn around while they're in there, which is hard in a semi. Uh, that's gonna be hard to do, but they-
Right, and now they've supplied flaggers when they open those gates. Like, if those gates are open and they're gonna be moving in and out, um, they'll provide a flagger right there.
Okay, and that concern came from a parent, and I loved it. I mean, if we could make things safe as much as possible, that's great.
So, can you ad- wait, wait, before you leave, can you address, is there any other situation like this where we have a high school and an elementary right by each other in the district?
No, and we're the only elementary with two crossguards. There's not another elementary or high school with two crossguards.
Some have zero. Um, but the other advantage, and I think everybody's kind of grasped this, um, intuitively, but you're getting the elementary school kids loading zone as far away from the student drivers, which are driving a car for the first time, getting in and parking.
And the construction.
You're literally separating that. I mean, which is an added advantage. Like, I wonder if we shouldn't have actually thought about this long- long ago.
That was probably on us, so we-
No, I'm not. I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying, the construction made it like, "We need to do something today. We wish we had more time," but as you look at it, this really seems like a good solution.
There's other possibilities. We watch how that construction goes. Maybe we could do a kindergarten, first grade, one-way drop off on that side, but have them drop off on the sidewalk and have the other side just parking. Can you see what I'm saying? Is have a drop off on that side, but make it more of a drop off, not a in and outs type of thing. That would put two locations where we could drop off. Those are things in the future. During construction, we probably won't get there.
W- w- which leads to my other question while you're here. Could you address, from what the earlier plans that I saw, and- and- and they've been modified a few times, so I'm not sure if they remained, that there was gonna be a fence to separate, like- like, right now, there's been some s- for your elementary school, th- they would go into the other, um, high school parking lot, and then kids would walk over to the elementary school. Is there still gonna be a fence there now, even after construction?
So- so, I- of course, I am not di- and now I do. I want to be, ever. I don't wanna be involved with that whole Red Men thing. And I- I want to- I'm not ta- I don't speak for the district. I'm just a principal. That would be Hunter and those guys. They'll tell you that, but I think they're going to, as far as the elementary school, we want to have fencing all around so that where all our kids are fenced in.
I know that was a design, and there was a gate, because there was some decision about whether the gate could be locked or not. Um, but my point is, is even after construction, y- it really probably won't be able to go back to the way it was. At least people that expected to drop off in that area.
And that'll also be different, because there'll be a driveway that go- a drive place that goes clear around that new building, and they'll be parking all along that side of the vocational building for- for staff and things like that, and- and students. So, there's gonna be a- a road coming along there, and then there'll be this other road, that- that road that we're talking about where they dropped off. So, I don't know if it'll work anyway, because if you have people driving in to get to the back to that new building, and you have a drop off here, that might conflict, but maybe not during drop off and pickup.
But they may keep, if they're gonna put a driveway right there, I bet you they keep a fence that goes, like what they've got now.
So, they're gonna enclose all elementaries and high schools. They- I mean, uh, elementaries especially, they'll- they'll have a fence all the way around. There'll still be places for kids to get in and out, like at bus drop off and things like that. So, there'll be a few places, from what I know, so.
Thank you.
Counsel, Michael Toposik, um, I've got children that go to the elementary school. Molly's heard my side of this. I've left messages. I've been ran around about this. I'm glad to hear a lot of what is being changed. The flaggers, that was me, and I will put money-
Yeah, and we appreciate that, for sure.
They better be certified flaggers in the state of Utah, 'cause that's mandatory.
Well, it's Big D, it's not our-
Big D is opening the s- the school and city for a liability if they're not a certified flagger and an accident happens. I'm on the city's side here, I'm on the school's side. This whole deal was not per the standards designed. This traffic study should've been designed by a certified traffic engineer or a civil engineer, and it should've been posted long before it happened. And because it wasn't, I'm trying to protect the city with this and the school district. If something happened, it's a can of worms. I've done school construction. I've been involved in it. It's a nightmare. I get it. You guys are all sitting here trying to help us keep our kids safe. So am I. That's- I care more about those kids than anything else in this town. I'll shut my business down to go make sure they're safe. I don't care. Molly knows that. So, to hear what I heard about Enic School, I can't agree more that that should be a one-way. I understand there's gonna be residents that are gonna be ticked. Who's more important, those seven, eight, ten residents for eight hours a day, or the safety of our kids? Sinage is cheap. You put signs up, it gets approved by you guys, guess what? RPD gets to make revenue off of stupid people. Play stupid games, get stupid tickets. It's real simple. So, I know I'm not perfect when it comes to driving. I do crazy stuff all the time, overload. Chief's probably gonna be watching me more now, but (laugh) when it comes to the school zones, I double-check everything. Phone goes down, my peripheral vision goes up double, because especially what happened Friday. That poor trucker, if something would've happened, his life would've changed forever. That construction company would've been out of place. I know Molly and I talked, and kind of the words were, "Are you trying to stop the construction?" No, I'm trying to look out for everybody, 'cause that construction company, if they go under, there's mouths that aren't gonna get fed, houses that aren't gonna have power and water. You see, where I'm going with this is, I'm not the bad guy. I'm just looking out for everybody. And I know I came off like the bad guy, but this needed to be designed better from the start. I would like to see a written draw- drawing and written structure done per the law, the federal law for school districts, and I wanna know why UDOT was not contacted, 'cause that's another thing the school district dropped the ball on. Any school traffic, UDOT's supposed to be called. So, with that, I'm gonna let this go and just watch to see the- the improvements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Bishop. Parowan resident. Um, thank you for having us, uh, here, um, to discuss this. Um, I live on the corner of two hundred and two hundred, and I don't see any of my neighbors here. Um, so, we have about four or five houses that are between one hundred and two hundred. Um, and in the first week, it was a disaster over there, but, um, I'm glad that everybody's aware of what- what was occurring over there. Um, I am concerned that, um, that this meeting is being held after this has already begun, um, that we're trying to solve problems that have already, um, started. Um, so, a lot of the, uh, the prob- I've- I've lived there for eighteen years, and I watch, um, the kids load and unload every day. Um, first week, I almost had about three strokes and two heart attacks, um, watching what was going on. Um, the young lady that's a police officer for our city was standing on the street with me, and we were just looking at it, and people were driving past the road close sign. Um, they were driving behind it through my yard. Um, they were parking in my yard double wide, in my yard. And this idea of maybe closing two hundred north, um, people have to stop to pick up their kids. And if you have a barrier there, what they will do is pull right up to that barrier and start using everybody's houses as a parking area to pick up their children. And when you do stop that, they have to cross the street to get there. So, we have three problems that are going on. We have people that are going one way. We have people that are backing up at the same time, and we have people that are parking on the opposite side of the street with kids running through cars.
Do you- do you still see that happening?
I've seen it. It happens- it's le- it's happening less frequently, and my main concern is here. I- I'm not- I'm not gonna moan and groan as- as a person that lives there. My main concern is the safety of these kids. And, um, I- I don't really have a problem with anything that you're doing. I have a little problem with the way it was implemented. Um, this letter that I got, first of all, didn't even have a time or date on it of when this meeting was. Whoever typed it, there's a problem. Um, it was crushed up and thrown out over my fence, near my front door. And there's only four houses, five maybe, 'cause one's kinda-
Well, I dropped those letters off, and I put everyone in the door.
Yeah, well, my d- my gate's locked, so I don't know how you did that, but anyway, um, so, um- you know, I have a lock on my gate, so I- I don't know how you-
I remember messing with the lock. I got through it, and I put it in the screen.
Okay, so, um, I found it on the ground. It's- but anyway, I- I- my point is, is that this- this meeting and the letter and everything happened in very short notice, and our meeting is happening after the fact. And, you know, I just want these kids to be safe, and, you know, these parents sometimes are on schedules, and they have to pick up kids in this, um, and they're in a hurry. I get it. I mean, everybody's got things to do. And, um, I think that the idea of making it one-way all day would be fine. I think that, um, uh, closing that road, um, is fine, if you close one road. If you close two, there's gonna be a problem. So, the question that I have is that there are seventy parking spots from one end of the s- um, one hundred to, um, the end of the school. Um, how many kids are getting picked up? I mean, does anybody know that number?
Principal, maybe? I don't know.
Well, we should know that number. If we only have an- a certain amount of parking spots, and more kids are being picked up than that, then parents are gonna be driving in circles and, uh, parking where they're not supposed to, going the opposite way. Um, so, I- I'm just- I'm- I'm concerned, um, for the safety of these kids, and I think we can do a better job, um, by thinking this out and planning a little more ahead, um, with- with some of these issues that- that are happening. So, thanks.
Thank you. Do you wanna come up and just say that again, just so it's recorded? That would be great. Thank you. Sorry to make you keep walking.
So- so, when we moved the bus zone, that opened up that whole section of- of, um, drop off, pickup, two additional spots. So, the- we- they- the Big D took up about (sigh) six and five, eleven spots previously, but opening up the bus zone, um, added additional spots over there. So, we have more places to pull in than we had previously before the construction started. Can you see what I'm saying? Um, but- but I don't know the exact number, and it varies, because people sometimes pick up their kids, sometimes they don't. Sometimes you'll have multiple parents coming, um, and so it just depends. But I will look into that, see if we can find out exactly how many that's- are there.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments during this public hearing? All right, I would entertain a motion from the council to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Now, moving into our consent meeting, these are items that are generally approved by one motion because they are of administrative nature, so I would- So I would entertain a a motion from the council to approve the consent meeting items, five through eight.
I move to approve the consent meeting items, agenda's five, or listed as five through eight on the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Moving now from the consent meeting into the action meeting, this is item number nine. We discussed it last council meeting in a work session, and we went through our background check policy. So this meeting would be the action meeting to vote for approval to adopt this policy. Is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the background check, action meeting number nine.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Item number ten, this is the item that we will be talking about, um, to approve the Haslam Anderson annexation. This is ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero eight. Do you have something you wanna introduce?
Yep, we need to table it. Um, we do not have a fully executed annexation agreement, as I hoped to, before this meeting. So, um, we 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 had m- they're waiting for one signature on there, and we need to make a minor modification. We'd hope to have that all cleared up before tonight, and I apologize if it's not, and it would not be appropriate. We Kelly and I talked about maybe doing a conditional approval. The problem with that is, as soon as this is approved by you guys, it's gotta go up to the Lieutenant Governor's office, and we don't wanna- We'd rather have our ducks in a row before that's the case, so.
Okay.
I I will send a copy of that executed agreement beforehand, um, so everybody can view that. Okay, that's all.
So with that, um, I need a motion to table this item.
I move to table item number, what is that, ten.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Item number eleven is the approval of the privacy policy statement. Judy is not here to present that. Dan, did you want to cover it, or is there someone else from staff that would like to cover that?
I actually don't have anything prepared, um, for this, so it'd probably be better to table it. But just to make you aware, there are, um, new requirements from the state, unless you were-
It looks like Kelly might be able to introduce it.
Well, um, she did.
Mm-hmm.
I feel fine voting on it.
It's basically a requirement. They reviewed what we had as a city, and they made this requirement. It went through legal, um, it was reviewed. Did you have anything to say about it?
No, I re- approved it. Thank you, Kelly, thanks, Judy, everybody did the due diligence with the Lieutenant Governor's office. In fact, I think it's the one they recommend, and I have no problem with approval.
Okay, thank you. So with that, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve the privacy policy statement.
I have one question before we do that. Does this include this private policy statement? Does this anything to do with the, what we ask of the citizens when they make application, like, for utility service agreements and things like that?
Yes. Yeah, we have to be very, very careful with information.
Well, then, I have, uh, brought up before the need to have the request of social security numbers. Because other municipalities aren't requesting that. And so I've asked that this be removed before.
Is there a reason why the social security's on that?
Um, (laugh) from what I understand, um, we collect the social security numbers on the utility service agreement because we are extending, it's like extending credit to a consumer. And so we keep those, and that is the way that we would have to find somebody if we had to.
But other municipalities aren't doing that. And you've got birth dates, and you've got bank, you know, name of banks, and s- and driver's license numbers. I mean, I think you, I don't think that's necessary.
So, so I would suggest that we we bring a discussion item and we talk through that when we can be prepared to know what things we actually need, and if we wanna keep doing what we need to do. Um, of course, this this item is to make sure that we're following state code in protecting private information. And you're saying, "Let's get less private information to protect," so I'm saying, "Let's bring that up as another agenda."
Exactly, I'm with, you know, we have to comply with what's required of us from the state, but we shouldn't be exceeding that.
Could we approve it with the conditions that we go through?
Well, I'm saying it's two separate things. This item is to say that we're always gonna protect everything in accordance with state law. And it's a separate issue to say, "Let's collect less information."
Because we could change that in internally, what we collect.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, and and we can have a good discussion with some, w- we can look into our policy of why we collect what we collect and have that discussion. We need to adopt this to be compliant with state code that says we're gonna protect the information that we do.
We need to have this in place, so we're compliant with the state of Utah, saying, "We, Parowan, recognize people's privacy with respect to policies regarding what we collect or don't collect and why we have it."
But we can review it as to what we do.
I can't, I can't even get dis-network without giving them my social security numbers, so.
Hey, I don't give mine to the doctors, so.
Um.
So, a lot of that is more, uh, the internal controls in place to protect it. The policies that we have, and that we don't disseminate it, and all of that other. But, uh, I'd recommend that we get this in place, and then we can fine tune it with policies and procedures.
Okay, so we can, after adopting the state, we can review it. Okay, that's all I ask.
Um, I just wanted to add that, uh, Judy texted and said it was Justin's request to have that on the utility service agreement. And she said, "This is for the website, and if we collect on, and if we collect money on the website, we don't collect any of that info on the website," so. But we do have to have that statement on the website. And just, and another, this is just me, sorry (laugh). This, um, we can be, we ha- we can be as strict as the s- we cannot be less strict than the state requires, but we certainly can be more strict if we desire. So, that's my opinion.
Okay.
Well, I think we can review it.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the privacy policy statement.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item twelve is the approval for the appointment of the new Public Works Director. Um, I wrote a little something, if I can find it now, and if not, I'm just gonna-
Do you wanna invite him up?
Muddle through, yes. Would you like to come up? Um, so we, um, opened this position and did extensive interviews early, earlier this month. And we had some wonderful applicants, and a really great process with this. And at the end of that process, we, um, had someone that we definitely were very much in agreement about. And I asked him to come here tonight as we go through this formality of approving him. Um, and he does have something prepared that he'd like to say.
Aldo Biassi.
Aldo Biassi, unless you are Aldo Biassi.
How do you pronounce it? We've been debating.
We need to-
We've known you forever, and nobody, it says your name the same.
My wife just says, "Come here," and that's (laugh).
And you listen, don't-
Good job, Amber, good job.
That's how I, that's how I answer. Um.
Aldo, I gotta ma- make a confession, I confused you with your brother the other day.
That's all right, we look a lot alike, so no, no big deal. Um, I've been called both my entire life, Aldo and Aldo. Um, Aldo is the the correct one, but but I will answer to, "Hey, stupid," or anything like that. Just 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 yell, and I'll I'll come running. Um, I just wanna thank the town, the hiring committee, um, for this opportunity. It it is something that, um, I take very seriously. Um, it was a very, a very hard decision for me to come here, um, and and leave the job that I was at. Um, but I I did it because I believe in what Parowan can be. Um, going back to what Dan was saying, um, at the start of the meeting, you know, what is our character? That's, that hit me pretty good. I thought that was a good, a good way to to start this. Um, you know, we won't, I'll stand before you, I'll bring you problems, but I'll also bring you solutions. Um, in this meeting so far, I've seen concerned citizens about infrastructure. I don't know if you remember, but I fixed your water years and years ago. There you go. Um, you know, and so, um, like I say, I know, I know a lot of the residents, um, don't know all everybody. But, um, in this meeting so far, I've seen you guys address, um, concerned citizens, concerned parents, about school zone safety. Um, with with good discussion, um, reasonable discussion, understanding, um, which is all good things. And so I'm, I like what I'm seeing there. I also saw a great saying on the back of a shirt, "With great beards come great responsibility." Um, hundred, hundred percent agree with that. You'll you'll see me beard it up quite often. Um, and so it's just, it's been, it's been a good meeting to come and listen to you guys. It's, it's been eye-opening, inspiring. Um, I think Parowan is is definitely on the upswing with a lot of, a lot of projects coming, which is, which is good. I like to stay busy, I like to improve, I like to find cost-effective ways to to put infrastructure back together again. Uh, that's what I've been doing for the past six years, um, finding good funding for the town, funding options, different things like that. Um, so, that's, that's all I prepared to say. Um, once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just need to clarify, um, he's replacing Kelly Stones, although Kelly will be with the city. This is, this is gonna be a transition. Um, Kelly is retiring, um, and and has announced his retirement. W- we will still have Kelly for some months, and we will celebrate Kelly's retirement at that point. But we we wanted, especially for a position like this, to get a, to get some transition. Um, Kelly has an encyclopedia in his head, and we're, we don't wanna lose that. And, um, anyways, we wanna make sure that there's a good handoff. One of the advantages with Aldo coming in is he does have a lot in his head already, because he's worked for Parowan long before he went to Bryanhead. So anyways, we'll celebrate Kelly when the time is appropriate.
Thank you.
Well, I'll move to appoint Aldo Biassi as our new Public Works Director.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, you're in.
I'll let's clap.
All right, now we are moving to item number thirteen. This is the PCA, and we did have a a very, uh, good discussion last council meeting and work session. It's now moved to action, which means we're going to be voting. Um, so Councilman Harris, do you want to cover it? Who would like to start this discussion?
Well, basically, I would like to start with, like, I would like the city, or Dan, to address. By asking, uh, the city to forgive the under-collection, this just put us in some sort of financial problem.
Let me, let me make sure I understand your question. Does this put us in a financial problem if we forgive it?
Yes.
Um.
Or is our electrical department still pretty healthy?
So it's all in how you define problem. Um, (cough) the the, uh, the electrical department luckily was healthy enough that even though we were eight hundred thousand dollars in the red at that point of the year, we did end up, at the end of the year, we weren't that far, we we did take a step back financially for the year. Um, it was an eight hundred thousand dollars net loss, it was a s- it was a a smaller number than that. It was the first net loss the power companies had, and I'm 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 just trying to speak in layman's terms, if, or sometime. Um, our power, our power department is healthy, it is strong. We knew that we could not sustain that, and we needed to take action. Um, it was literally unsustainable. So, the the real question is, is obviously moving forward, do we try to, do we try to collect that under-collection that we had? That's the term that's used with the PCA? And return the city back to its original trajectory with the electric company? Or do we basically write that off, so to speak? That's not an official term, because we don't write things off like you would for taxes, but essentially stop trying to collect the un- under-collection. So the, th- we would s- keep our current bond rating as far as how much cash reserves we have if we don't try and go back and do that. Um, we did take a hit, it's not gonna be a hit that would ca- cause bankruptcy or cause us to, um, lose a bond rating. Although we do keep an eye on those things, um, we've had a lot of training recently by UAMPS. Our bond rating, bending, depending on how healthy our our, um, financial, um, stability of our power company affects all of the projects that we're involved with, and so this will not cripple us if we do it. So that's all I wanted to say to answer that.
So basically, if we just go to following what the study stated by following what the PCA chart says, and we said, "We're forgiving that under-collection," it doesn't necessarily mean we're not gonna be, i- it's still not gonna get made up, just made up slower.
No, you've just, we've just basically-
Because there's still money to be made in power.
Reset, so so you wanna pu- you want an enterprise fund, w- literally by state code, it needs to make money. Um, it doesn't need to make so much money that that it has too much money. We we want to make sure that it has just enough money to take care of all of its capital maintenance and, um, satisfy the the bondholders if we have outstanding bonds and all of that. But we don't wanna have it so rich that we're actually charging too high of rates. So it reset us back, um, a certain a, certain degree. And we could choose to absorb that. We could, and the question is, is should we? And I I think that's really your decision. If if this, if, and I've looked at it, and I've looked at our days' cash reserves and all of that stuff, post-end of the fiscal year, which was June, which would completely have absorbed that, and it did not put us into a situation where we're now in danger of, um, directly affecting our current bonds or a future bond. However, we did take that hit, so it did happen.
But we're still financially good.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm I'm careful to not be pinned to the wall, but but that's not just me being slimy and trying to avoid being pinned to the wall, because it did happen. And, you know, a bank would look at us now slightly differently than if it didn't, because they're gonna say, "You lost money that year." And we'll say, "Yeah, did you see what rates did?" Um, whether they would say, "W- you're now a higher risk" or not, would be, uh, the bank judging us, or or a bond holders judging us.
Okay, I've gotta look back several years when we got into a situation in the city where we had an infrastructure that was deteriorating, and we had to expand it. And the only way to do that was to borrow money, and we're still paying that back. And we need to have a good solvent entity that can make sure those lights are on no matter what, and whatever comes up. And we have debt service to take care of, but we we need to have a reserve to take care- Because this is a, this is a different enterprise, but this is a business of its own. This is a power company, and it needs to, if there's, uh, needs that come up that are, that, I mean, they're exorbitant, uh. We need to be able to take care of those in a timely manner so that the citizens have a reliable source of power. And if we're forgiving these, I mean, we bought power and paid power for a higher rate than we charged for it. Well, and that's where the PCA stops, the law stops the bleeding.
Yeah, yeah, we stopped the bleeding.
But we need to recover that loss so that our, the power company can stay.
So I just had an idea, and I wanna propose an idea. Um, we just went to a UAMPS training. UAMPS people, raise your hands. We're gonna hear from them in a minute. Um, we went to a, what's called the Municipal Toolkit Training. They had quite, uh, 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 they had a great, um, financial analyst that really, I was, I- It's rare that I'm really impressed with a financial presentation. Um, they did an amazing job. One of the things they talked about was, this is general advice for power comp- municipal power companies in general. One, in this volatile market, you would be, you would be remiss if you didn't have a PCA. The PCA is, we've talked about, is a shock absorber, right? We're in a really volatile market. The second thing they said is, "You need to have a cash reserve policy." And then they gave us some really good recommendations, and they said, "This is the way we recommend you to structure it." And it's not like what we have done in the past is, "Well, we should have X amount of million in the bank." That's been our cash reserve policy of the past. I don't even think we have an officially have one right now. But I would recommend that we actually do a study of of, because they recommend it's a formula that consists of like five major factors. One, if you were to lose, um, a a major piece of equipment, and you can identify what those things are, what is the likelihood of that happening, what is the cost of the replacement of that? Then you multiply that out, and that gives you a a certain number. What is the cost of the replacement of that? Then you multiply that out and that gives you a, a certain number. Then they say, "You need to have enough money that you can pay your power bill for X amount of months without any revenue coming in." That's, that's as sensitive to the economy and what would potentially happen. And then they say, so there's about five factors and they say, "This is the formula which works regardless of the scope and size of your power department. A, a smaller power department's gonna have a smaller cash reserve to some degree. The more rural you are, actually, there's a factor for that as well because you have less resources to call on." I, I would recommend, I would propose the following. Unless you guys really wanna make a determination right now, do whatever you want, obviously, motion wise. But, um, maybe we actually pause the under collection discussion until we can do a cash reserve study. Because it very well may be that even after this thing has happened, our cash reserve study says, "We're totally good." Cause we're basing this all off of where we're at now and we don't really have identified where we should be right now from a cash reserve standpoint only. I did bring you, when we, we talked about this a while back, um, you know, bond ratings, um, from triple A down to junk bonds based on days' cash on hand in general for utility companies. But this is not as in-depth as this, so.
Sure, I'm sorry, Councilmember Downey, you wanted to speak and I didn't.
Well, it was just, I, I feel that we, we need to keep collecting the, the un- that we haven't collected. You've got besides the volatility of, of the power in the future, which is gonna go up, we know that. You've also got equipment failure, which Dan talked about, which it goes up a million, million and a half to two million for equipment. We have, we have bonds we have to pay for what we've repaired or upgraded, rather. So we just can't, we can't cut ourselves short. And that's what I feel we're doing if we do that.
If I felt this would put Perron City in some sort of financial crisis, I wouldn't even suggest it, so.
But I don't know what, Dan, maybe you got a different take from, but when I left that meeting, that seminar down there, UAMPS, I just felt you can't forgive it. Because of what they, all the presentation, the facts, the, the, you know, the percentages, ratios, everything that they gave, I just felt you couldn't forgive it.
My only thought is, is, is we don't have a good, a really good, um, objective measure of what, how much cash on sh- hand we should have. And I think if we go through this study, that'll give us, first of all, we, the, the other thing a cash reserve policy gives you is you have some, you, you voted in by ordinance, you have some direction that says, "Should this event happen, our cash reserves fall below a certain point, you should do X, Y, Z." And it gives us not only a good number, but that is a number that can be a living number that updates as prices go up, as Sharon talks about. You know, that's one of the things that you plug into this, this formula that says, "Okay, this just went from a million to two million on replacement. Plug that in, where does that say our cash policy, where we're at now?" And it may change, and then we have to do X, Y, Z to, to, to get us back into some good bands of whatever. I'm just saying right now, I can look at it, I can step back as a general finance person and say, "Yeah, we have a healthy power company. We took a hit last year. We still have a pretty healthy power company." But if we have an actual policy and then compare where we're at, it very well may say that we're actually really good still and we don't have to do anything. And it may say, "We need to, we need to do something."
Well, I just don't wanna repeat of what we had a number of years ago when we had to go and basically raise everybody's rates, tax, everything. I mean, we had to go out and borrow money to up.
Yeah, but the PCA solves.
And to expand it. We had to because you had deteriorating, which is a constant factor when you have equipment of any kind. Your system will, will, it depreciates in the fact that it will deteriorate where it has to be replaced and upgraded.
I don't know, um, Jeremy, kinda looks like you wanna say something. And I know I was in that immediate meeting as well and sat through that, um, presentation that I was also very impressed by. And at the end of that presentation, which it was, it was a long presentation, but it was really exciting because I'm excited about things like this now, which is really actually cool 'cause I'm learning a lot. What, did I, you're, you were like one table over, but I texted you. What did I text you?
Uh, I don't remember. My memory's not great. Um.
Hopefully, I think you.
I know, I know one text you said, uh, "We wish there was other council members at this meeting. It'd be good for them to hear." Is that the one you sent out?
Yeah, I wish we were all there, which it couldn't, we couldn't. We always are, we have other things.
Which is kinda why I was on the edge of my chair. Like, like Dan said, we could, we could, you know, just follow the spreadsheet for a month or two and we could get UFS to either conference call. And I've been working with UFS and Beaver City on a impact study. We're trying to get them to come to the area and just put on a presentation for us, Beaver and Fillmore. And, and let, let, let you all hear kind of the presentation they gave and the PCA. I mean, with the two, um, new council members, they haven't sat through meetings after meetings of PCA and why we have it and with, you know, with Chris Lund who designed it. And, and the ones that have been here, I think are kind of on the other side of the fence that we need to keep looking at under collection. And so, um, I mean, like Dan said, we, we could pause, recoup in the under collection and look at other things, look at a cash reserve policy. Have Chris Lund from UFS come in. You know, we, um, as I put the power bill in today, the twenty fifth is when I get it, it says the PCA should be three and a half cents. We've been at three for the last three months. Um, so, I mean, I can put the three and a half cents on the next bill, which doesn't address under collection. Um, and we, we can wait, you know, and see if we wanna look at cash reserve policy and get Chris here. I think he can put more color to the picture of, you know, what, what they recommend, what they see throughout the nation and, you know, to keep us financially healthy, which just having a PCA moving forward should protect, I mean, will protect us from having those losses. I mean, it's a, it's there to take the highs out of our bills. We pass them on. If our bills are low and consistent, the, the PCA number to the citizens is much lower. I mean, it's there for that reason moving forward, but.
But we need some reserves in case any catastrophic event, have reserves.
Absolutely. And we, we, I mean, a substation transformer, when we put those out there twelve, fifteen years ago, we're seven hundred fifty to eight hundred thousand. I mean, they're, they're a million and a half a piece now for a sub. And if we build a new substation with our growth, we'd be upwards of three million dollars probably for a new sub. So, I mean, there, there is definitely some equipment that costs a lot, which we would, could just.
I just don't wanna start from zero.
Absolutely, yeah. And with already having current bonds.
Yeah.
On this infrastructure upgrade and substation upgrade we did.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have debt.
We're in debt.
Absolutely. But just some suggestions.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
So.
I would, I would like to see, have Dan then figure out what makes us healthy then. That's what I'd say.
We, we could do it ourselves in-house. We could hire UFS to give us a recommendation. I'd be happy to do whatever, whatever.
Then let, let, let everyone find out what's healthy.
We, we need a cash reserve policy. That needs to happen no matter what.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, we have options, um, to, for this motion.
I propose to table this motion until we figure this out.
Well, let's put in there something about getting a UFS, or evaluation, either junction.
We, we have a first and a second on the table.
We're, we're good. We're good, Dave. We can do it.
So all those in favor?
We'll do it. Just tabling it.
Wait, there, there is one more item we gotta discuss on this. The under collection is only half of it. But there is a motion and a second on the table.
Yeah, that, there is a motion and a second, so we have to vote at this point.
Well, if we have a motion and a second, can we still discuss?
Oh, then we'll.
Before we vote? Can we do that?
Well, what I wanna bring up is the ongoing management, which is a whole separate issue. So let's vote on the, the under collection part of it. Maybe friendly amendment. I can't tell you to make a friendly amendment, but maybe you could adjust your amendment that, about the under collection portion.
Okay.
I can do any.
Okay, do you wanna, do you wanna do that amendment?
I'm in, opening this back up for discussion.
So your motion would be to, on the PCA portion of the agenda item?
On the under collection.
Okay. I motioned to table the PCA part of this discussion.
Contention upon a study.
Contention upon the study. Thank you.
On the under collection portion.
On the, on the under.
The other item is also PCA related.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the new guy, sorry.
You're doing great. I'll second your amended motion. Do we need to make our motion again, Callie?
Oh.
We need to, I think have it restated. Sharon didn't.
I, I was trying to figure out what he said. Now, are we, we're gonna table the under collection?
Decision.
Decision. Until we do either our study or hire someone to come and do it.
Yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure I understood it right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
It's, it's already been seconded by David Harris. So all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you second the amended version?
I second the amended.
But it's okay. Still hear it on there.
Alright, we did divide this agenda item, so now we're moving into ongoing management discussion.
So the two things we needed to talk about tonight was, one, what to do with the under collection. And, um, and, and, and Councilman Harris really wanted to, to bring this and have the council make that decision. The other thing that we wanted to discuss was whether the council wanted to make all of the decisions regarding the PCA on an ongoing basis, whatever periodic timetable we decide, or whether to have that role be done by the Power Board. Um, the previous council said to have the Power Board make those judgment calls on a ongoing basis. And, um, Councilman Harris wanted to discuss, I'm not putting words into your mouth, whether that should be done by the council or whether that should be done by the Power Board. Because the, the Power Board essentially is controlling rates to a, to a, to some effect. Unless the council wanted to say, "Power Board can do it, but we're just gonna tell you to, to follow the, the PCA or not." So that's the other discussion, is how do we wanna manage the PCA moving forward? Do we want to, do we want to just peg it to whatever the spreadsheet says and, and then let the Power Board monitor it and bring anything to us that's concerning? Or do we want to have the city council, um, give them the ability to basically stretch out if there's a big shock even farther, which is what we're doing. That's why we're even talking about an under collection. Or whether do we have the city council just make all the judgment calls? So those are kinda the options and we need to decide how we want, how this council wants to delegate that to the Power Board or not. And what's the methodology?
Did you have anything after that?
I think if, if they're following the chart, I'm good with the chart, you know? Like, I don't have anybody else on that, but I'd follow the chart. Like, we may have a set of three cents. If it's supposed to be three five, then make it, you know, oh, three five. So like, we can't lose money on it, so.
And I'm concerned if it, if we are in charge of it every single month. I don't know when the bills come in, but I know the bills don't correlate with council meetings when you have to set the PCA for the next, um, just come up. Because I know, you know what I'm saying. And I just know that when we talked about this last time with the PCA, it being, that's, I think, why we gave the Power Board kind of the ability to do that is because of when the bills came in and when we hold council meetings, the timing was off. The timing was off.
Yeah, and, um, like Councilman Harris says, if we follow just what the spreadsheet says, we don't have to look at it every month. I mean, I input the numbers every month, but it just spits out a number and we put that on the bill. So you don't have to meet every month. So really, the reason that the Power Board was governed is because we were trying to figure out what to do monthly with under collection. And so.
Which is adding a little extra to it.
Yeah, which we can still do. We can still follow the spreadsheet and just add a, a quarter of a cent on, and ju- and let that quarter of a cent pick up under collection, or half a cent. I mean, if, if we follow the spreadsheet more, then we don't have to meet monthly on it. The spreadsheet does its job. I input the numbers, I give that to the billing department and that goes on the bill.
Makes it simple.
And, and wasn't it when we did the first one, when we started the PCA? The spreadsheet, if I remember rightly, it said seven cents.
Yeah, I think it was like six, eight or six.
It went down to four so it didn't hit the customers, is the residents is bad.
Yeah, there, there was, there was a six month period a few months ago where the PCA said we could've been in the two and a half cents range, too. And that's, and that's the nice thing about it is it does move, you know, and I do, and this year has been a lot better power cost than we had. And so we're trending in a good direction.
And when we went to three cents, it actually said two point seven. So we, we really are following the spreadsheet.
Yeah, other than like, when we go from four to three to two, I mean, we, we are, but then it's like.
But that's what we're.
Right now, we're close to it, you know?
You're gonna be doing that, though.
Well, right, but the, but, but by just following what the spreadsheet number gives on the twenty fifth of each month, I input numbers that gives me a printout rather than saying, "Okay, Power Board or Council, the spreadsheet says three cents. Do you wanna go three point five to, to look at under collection or?" Um, you know, so, I mean, really, if we, if we tabled the, the PCA under collection and we can just, for right now, say, "Follow the spreadsheet." It gives me an input right now to go on the bills in four days. And then as we get the cash reserve policy, we can re-discuss.
Correct.
So if we just follow the spreadsheet which we have in place, I input the numbers monthly.
Well, the Power Board meets every month, right?
Typically, if we have a few items.
And they do evaluate it. And of course, you're watching it consistently. And so other than the way I understand it, it, it was to come to the council only if there was a need. You know, like a extreme situation like there was. Other than that, it's supposed to kinda govern itself.
Yeah. And, and I think part of the problem is when we started it, we set a number that was not what the spreadsheet said. We just set this number and then it's like, "Okay, how long do you use that one number when this thing's actually doing its thing, moving up and down? And you're, you're set at this number and then Power Board makes a decision to lower it a little, but then when do we meet again? Or when, when do we say, "Oh, it needs to be higher?" You know? The, the spreadsheet will do its job and keep us from going more undercollected. I mean, off of a six month rolling average, but.
That's the intent, I think, of a PCA.
Absolutely. To ebb and flow with the high or, or lower power costs.
So what we need to do is just, like, it's been tabled, we need to work out this under collection.
Which, which with the cash reserve policy, which we can look at later. But if we look, I mean, as for direction right now and who governs it, if we just say, "Follow the spreadsheet currently until we get this cash reserve policy and then readdress," I think that's a good.
I think that's.
That's what we need to do.
I think that's basically what.
It's a lot easier on me to just follow, especially input the numbers.
Follow what it says.
We, we paid for the study for a reason. We, we follow, you know, and then as we get a cash reserve policy, if it comes back and says, "You, you need to up this or this." And as we do, uh, rate review with UFS, things will change a little. That's gonna be probably in the next month. So I think for the current month of billing, do what the spreadsheet says and that's what we paid for. And for, you know, maybe a month or two, we follow that and see where it gets us.
Okay. So do we need a motion to that?
It, it would be a change, yeah, so.
So I'll make a motion that we follow the PCA spreadsheet and just let it dictate the rate that's set.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Thank you for that discussion. We are now moving out of our action meeting into our work meeting. And the first item on our work meeting agenda is UAMPS update from CEO Mason Baker. You might have to do it without slides. What would that be like?
We have a piece of equipment, no, the.
This went off, this went off when I unplugged it. We have a piece of equipment that is literally failing and it's our HDMI splitter. Um, I might, no, I guess I can't.
I, I'm happy to go without slides and I, I'm probably gonna use a bit of a, the slides that I have as a crutch, but y'all won't see them, so I'm gonna do my best to help visualize, um.
We, we can put slides on that the council can see.
Okay.
These, these monitors are still working, but you won't be able to see your slides.
That's fine. That doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'm, I'm happy to.
Or just wing it, whatever you'd like to do.
Yeah.
We can flip one of these around.
If they can see them, that's, I think that's helpful, um.
I'm sure we could flip, yeah, and we can share.
Well, mine's probably the one to flip, but I don't wanna like kill the whole system because I.
Oh. Oh, wait.
Okay.
Now that you just got that up there. Now it's up there. That's okay. That's okay. We can look here and we're, we're good. Alright.
Right, we're not picky.
No, that's.
No, this is great, because we can look right there, and then you guys can see it.
See, there's one advantage of getting moved over here.
(laughing).
I know, I've been asking you to switch me back.
All right, Kelly, so I can just ask you to advance? Does that work? No, that's, that's great. Um, Mayor, Council, I really appreciate the opportunity to be with you all this evening. Um, and as we go through this, um, please, happy to take questions along the way, if, if that's okay, or hold them to the end. I'm, I'm good with whatever. I'm not sure what the preference is for, for this group. Um, if you could go to the next slide. What I was planning to go through is, you know, a bit of, of course, some quick background on UAMPS. Explain what's going on in the wholesale electric market. Um, it seems like it's a timely time to talk about this, given the PCA discussion this evening. Um, talk about what UAMPS is doing with the members, because there is a massive transition that is underway. Um, so, we're, we're accounting for that, um, we're adapting to it. There's going to be a lot more interaction with the members moving forward, because things are changing. And I'll get into some of those changes. Y'all have clear, clearly been experiencing those changes. We'll talk about what we're doing as far as resources. And then, we'll spend a little bit of time talking about the Parowan resource mix that you currently use to serve your constituents here. And, um, also talk about a few strategic initiatives that we're undertaking. I know some of y'all heard those, um, last week down at the municipal toolkit. Um, so, quick background on UAMPS. We were formed in nineteen eighty. We are, um, formed under the Utah Innovation Act. We were originally formed to acquire the Hunter coal plant, and that is a significant resource for Parowan, and we'll get into that more specifically. Um, and some of the challenges that that resource has been facing over the last several years that caused a direct impact on Parowan going back. And that's, you know, frankly, probably the major reason that caused you all to look at doing the PCA. Um, we currently have fifty members. Most of our members are in Utah. We are in seven states, um, in the west. We have members on the east side of California. We go down into New Mexico, up into Idaho, um, and also up into Wyoming, and have some members in Nevada as well. Um, our current organizational structure is we are a project-based joint-action agency. And what that means is we allow our members to say, "What resource projects do they want to have? Make up their resource portfolio to serve their customers." Um, and that's a little different than some other organizations. Some other organizations say, "This is the resource mix, and that's what we're going to provide you on a wholesale basis, and that's it." Um, we're looking at offering that sort of option for some of our members who seem interested in us at least exploring that, to where we would come up with a resource mix, and that's the resource mix that they would use to serve their customers. Uh, we think that there's value in exploring that option. Um, some of our members seem interested in going down that road. That's a type of organizational format that an agency like UAMPS, um, that's in Utah County, Utah Municipal Power Agency, that's their, that's their platform. Um, there are entities in the US that offer both that all-re requirements platform, like UNPA, and at the same time, offer the traditional UAMPS project-based structure. So, we can have members that are, um, either all-re requirements or project-based. That's an investigation we're exploring now. More to come on it. We'll likely talk about it more in August during our annual member conference, which will be in Midway. And we would, certainly would encourage y'all to come up to that if you're able to. It's an educational conference. We'll have a lot of good speakers. Jackie Coombs, who I should have introduced. If you aren't aware, Jackie Coombs does our member relations and is in charge of organizing that conference, and does a really good job at organizing that conference amongst, uh, the many other duties that she does for UAMPS. All of our projects are organized, independent, and managed independent from each other. Kelly, if you go to the next slide, please. So, what you see here in this pie chart, and this will give you a sense, and this is overall UAMPS, um, so this isn't specific to Parowan. But what this resource pie chart shows, back in twenty twenty-three, and this was the really challenging year um, that all the members had, that we had, um, in twenty twenty-three, in the aggregate, twenty-five percent of the electricity for all the members came from hydro. Um, I point that out because that's a significant amount of, um, generation coming from hydro, and it means that, yes, we're very subject to snowpack conditions. Um, this hydro is mainly coming from the Glen Canyon Dam and Flaming Gorge. So, we monitor what's going on with Lake Powell, lake levels, very seriously, given this amount of generation that we serve for the members. Other things to point out in this pie chart, coal makes up fifteen percent. If we went back fifteen years, um, coal would have been the predominant form of electricity. That would have been the predominant form west-wide. It has shifted over the last fifteen years, where coal no longer is the predominant form. For our members, our west-wide in the electric system. Uh, natural gas has taken over. Um, right now, it's twenty-one percent. We anticipate that it will grow. Um, this trend of going from coal to natural gas isn't unique to the western interconnect that we're in. This has happened nationwide. The main driver has been horizontal drilling and fracking. Um, we have an abundance of natural gas. We'll talk about our natural gas studies that we're doing. We're looking at doing new natural gas. Um, the other significant portion of the pie here is purchases in red. And this red portion was really the problematic portion in twenty twenty-three, when the wholesale electric market was extremely high-priced, and we had a lot of members due to issues, and I'll just point it out now. So, with Parowan in particular, very reliant on the Hunter coal project. And what happened was, we got pushed in to some wholesale electric market purchases due to coal scarcity issues at Hunter, and that wholesale market was very, very high. We had a number of members, Parowan being one, where they were very exposed to those wholesale market prices, and it was very challenging that year in particular. Moving forward, we're recommending much less exposure to the wholesale market. It had been a safe place to be for a number of years, um, but that is no longer the case. Um, so, we're recommending a lot less exposure to the wholesale market moving forward. We do have wind at three percent. Um, we're looking at doing more wind, solar at three percent. We've had more solar come on since twenty twenty-three, um, and we anticipate more coming on. On the right side of this slide, in red, that red font indicates what projects Parowan is participating in. Uh, next slide.
Before you move on, were, were those members that were involved in one of the UAMPS natural gas projects as affected by the fluctuations as just being exposed to the, to the market due to the main input being natural gas commodities?
They were impacted. It's a tough one for me to answer, um.
Just in general?
They, they were impacted. Um, you know, one thing that we've done since twenty twenty-three is move forward with buying more natural gas on a forward basis to remove that sort of exposure to that natural gas pricing volatility. Because that's, you know.
Yeah, because that's what I'm wondering, if, if we participated in another, in a, in, in an upcoming natural gas project, will be, will we, will we be as exposed as we are when we're purchasing on the open market? That was what I was getting at.
Yep.
Should we be as worried about that?
Well, and I, and I think for Parowan, and we'll see it in a few slides, I, and I'll say it now, and we can talk about it again later. I, I think for Parowan, there's just too much exposure to the Hunter project. Um, when we went into twenty twenty-three, the forecast for Parowan was assuming that ninety-two percent of Parowan's energy would come from Hunter. And that's a lot of exposure to one resource. And if that resource has some issues, like coal scarcity, coal delivery issues, then it's a problem. So, our recommendation is to have more resource diversification to minimize that exposure. Um, next slide, please, Kelly. So, you know, I talked about this a little bit last week at the toolkit that we had, that's already been mentioned a few times this evening. Um, but just to underscore it some more for this group tonight is, we are going through a huge change as the electric system nationwide. Um, and there's going to be a lot of changes between now and twenty twenty, excuse me, now and twenty thirty. There are going to be challenges, but there are also opportunities. We're going to have to be doing more with the members to account for it. And, you know, just going through and using the example we were just talking about, trying to diversify, um, Parowan's resource mix from Hunter is one thing that we're going to be looking at in particular. Um, next slide, Kelly. This graph will give you a sense of what nationwide the resource mix looks like. Um, you can see here, natural, and I should explain some of these acronyms. We're really bad as an industry on acronyms, so I'm going to, um, apologize for that, but walk you through NGCC is natural gas combined cycle. Um, that is, you can see here, the predominant form of installed capacity nationwide. Again, if we went back fifteen years, the natural gas and the coal would have been reversed. With natural gas being so cheap and plentiful, natural gases become the predominant form of installed generating capacity nationwide. Um, CT is combustion turbine, so that's also natural gas. Um, wind, that's come on very strong over the last fifteen years. Nuclear stayed about the same. You can see more gas in orange. Solar has grown significantly. Um, hydro stayed about the same. We started to see more batteries. And Kelly, if you go to the next slide, this will show you, um, this is on an annual basis between now and the end of the decade, what's anticipated to be added to the system nationwide. You can see on the left with solar, lots of new solar coming on, fair amount of new natural gas, a fair amount of onshore wind. There's offshore wind. There's a big push on offshore wind. We're not really looking at doing offshore wind. Um, I'd point out the middle, batteries. That's going to be, a huge amount of batteries are anticipated to come on. We're looking at new batteries. We'll talk about that. Um, but there's been a significant amount of new batteries installed in California and in other places, Texas, all over. There's going to be a lot of battery installations in Utah. Um, coal is declining. It's anticipated to decline. Um, and gas, to a certain extent, looks like, and these are probably mostly old gas plants that would be going offline. Um, gas will continue to be a, a very significant form of generation moving forward. Next slide. Um, there's a lot of talk about the energy transition. It is going to be bumpy. Um, these are the four pillars that have been identified that need to be dealt with as we go through this energy transition. There's a clear movement to low to no-carbon resources. Um, there's plenty of developers that we talked to that want to pitch us on renewable projects, solar and wind. Um, what we're not seeing is folks coming, developers coming to us wanting to do new natural gas projects. Um, and we're, we've recognized that, um, and our, our path moving forward will be to be looking at developing our own new natural gas projects, because developers just aren't filling that void. Uh, on the transmission side, nationwide, we need to do a lot more new transmission than we have. Um, that's going to be a significant undertaking. The other aspect on transmission, for us to bring on new resources, it will take us about five years to interconnect new resources. Um, and that's something that we have to be very mindful of moving forward. And when we think about doing new natural gas, it is on any sooner than twenty thirty. We have to have a reliable electric system. We are very fortunate in the US and in Utah to have a very reliable electric system. As we have more and more renewable generation, we call it variable generation, come online, the system is going to have to be operated in a way than what we're used to. We're used to hav- having, you know, frankly, a lot of coal plants that run flat-out ninety, eighty percent of the time, eighty-seven, sixty hours of the year. When we have solar generation, it will operate, a good solar plant will operate thirty percent of the time, and we need to figure out how to deal with that. And that's just part of the energy transition. Thing about solar is that it's, it's cheap. Um, at the end of the day, we need to make sure that we have a balanced system. Um, the last pillar up here is the energy supply chain. We've all dealt in our lives with supply chain issues coming out of enduring COVID. We dealt with it with all the utility-scale solar projects that we had contracted for. They were all two years delayed from when they were supposed to be online, and that caused those issues in our forecasting. There's a big movement to bring more domestic manufacturing, whether it's solar modules, whether it's transformers. Um, unfortunately, we do not really have the domestic manufacturing to do this energy transition. We're, as a nation, trying to do that. We are very reliant currently, in particular, on China. Um, they're not the greatest trade partner, and we've dealt with that. I mean, that's a gross understatement. Um, but it's something that, it's just a reality that we need to realize as we go through this process. Um, so, there's more geopolitical aspects of this energy transition that we need to be mindful of. Um, next slide, please. We did do a integrated resource plan, and what this plan really does is it looks at all of the UAMPS member needs in the aggregate and identifies what's the optimal set of new resources that UAMPS should be pursuing for the members. And what we're looking at here on this slide, these are the key takeaways from that plan. The first one says, "You should really be looking at doing three hundred megawatts of combined-cycle natural gas and two hundred megawatts of peaking gas generation." That peaking gas generation really does well with complementing renewables. When they come offline, then this peaking generation is able to come up quickly, um, and, you know, deal with the loads, in particular, in the summer, um, when it's hot and loads are, are very up. We need to have this sort of generation. I will say, um, came out today, the final EPA rule on new greenhouse gas regulation. It will affect, um, combined-cycle natural gas in particular. Um, the rule will be litigated, for sure, um, but it's something that we're going to have to navigate moving forward. That rule also will affect, and I should be careful in how I say affect, because the rule will be litigated. Um, but if it were to be implemented as finalized, um, it would, it would require, um, carbon capture on the Hunter coal plant or a retirement. Um, so, that is something else that we'll have to navigate. It's just the nature of being in the utility business these days. There's a lot of uncertainty on generation that has a carbon emission profile on it.
Mason, can I ask a question?
Please.
What, what has this administration done to either help or, or hurt the ut-, you know, the power grid? Or utilities for, for especially the rural communities?
Mm-hmm.
Is?
When you say administration, what are you referring to?
Federal.
The Biden administration?
The Bi- oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
I'm not going to say that word. I'm not gonna say that word, but I mean, they're the ones that are controlling what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
We know what they've done.
You know.
Yeah, well, I mean, they, they, I mean, under the Biden administration, they have moved forward with this rule that came out today. Um, and, you know, it is very challenging, it will be litigated. Um, so that's, you know, that's creating uncertainty, in particular, in our pursuit of new natural gas and uncertainty on how long Hunter will remain a viable asset.
Okay, uh, last week, I believe it was, Rocky Mountain said they were going to keep, is it Huntington?
Mm-hmm.
Huntington?
And Hun- and...
And Hunter up, so is it forty-two?
Forty-two.
Any, any challenge from the federal government come across with that yet?
Well, this rule that came out today would make it very difficult to keep Hunter going to twenty forty-two based on the Integrated Resource Plan. Where Rocky Mountain identified that twenty forty-two shutdown date.
Okay.
Yeah. And it, it is an issue that, you know, we've talked to them as a co-owner in the facility, and we've known the rule is coming out and that we're gonna have to identify what the game plan is to deal with it. Yeah. I mean, I, and then maybe I'll jump down to the, the third takeaway on the IRP. And what it said is you need to hold on to Hunter as long as you can. Um, and, and why is that? There's two main reasons. One, it is so hard to bring on replacement resource for it, and it just takes time. The second is that Hunter historically, and y'all at Parowin will know this, is it's been a very low cost resource for us. And then all of a sudden, we start dealing with coal scarcity issues and coal price increases, and it's no longer a low cost resource. And we need to figure out how to manage through that. So it's, it's a challenge. It also said, the third takeaway is that we need to keep Nivo, our natural gas combined cycle plant that's in Payson, operating as long as possible.
Thank you.
Other takeaways from the Integrated Resource Plan, it said, look at doing, um, solar and batteries in the amount of about three hundred megawatts of solar, a hundred and fifty megawatts of batteries. We'll talk about it in a minute. We are, um, taking that direction and looking at the Fremont project, which is close by here. Um, we'll talk about that in a minute. It also said, look at acquiring land for some of these new generation facilities. In sum, our Integrated Resource Plan said you have a significant amount of new resources that you need to look at procuring for the members, and we're doing that. Next slide, please. So turning to Parowin, and, um, this is going back to twenty twenty-three, so this is really the, the challenging year and, you know, related to what drove likely the PCA discussion. Um, and this is what happened in actual space. It's not what was forecasted. Because I mentioned earlier, what was forecasted was you guys were gonna be mostly relying on Hunter, right? And so what happened in actuality, we can see pool, and what that really means is wholesale electric market purchases. And that was twenty-nine percent. Um, and I tell you, having looked at this, that twenty-nine percent really reflects the financial hardship that was in twenty twenty-three for y'all. So that was a bad spot to be. Moving forward, our recommendation is that members have less than ten percent pool exposure. And again, you know, you weren't anticipating to have twenty-nine percent. That was driven by Hunter not operating as anticipated. Um, but moving forward, we'd wanna have less exposure to Hunter than, say, ninety per, because it was ninety-two percent was what you were forecasted. Um, the PX is forward market transactions. So it's not like nothing happened once we started seeing the issues with Hunter. Rather, you know, Jeremy, um, starts working and get, getting some forward market transactions in the, in the form of the PX. That's what that sliver is. IPP, um, you guys have the ability to call back IPP. Um, that's another valuable option. That callback option, um, becomes a little more constrained, um, once it's converted to natural gas. Um, but that's a valuable option, too, that can minimize your reliance on Hunter. Um, Hunter was sixteen percent. CRISP, which is the Colorado River Storage Project, was, um, sixteen percent, and you sold resources in the amount of six percent. Um, the pie chart on the right just shows it in a more general form. You know, purchases, which is the combination of PX and pool, at fifty-three percent. And we think that, you know, PX purchases is fine because it gives pricing certainty. Again, what we wanna minimize is that pool exposure because it is pricing uncertainty. And that's difficult to plan for and manage from a rate making standpoint. Um, coal at thirty-one percent. And, you know, this kind of maybe gets back to Dan's question on, well, if you, you know, if we had some Nivo, some natural gas, would we have been better off? And, you know, the answer is, and that's something that, you know, we're talking to some of the members because we do have some members that maybe have more Nivo than they probably should. And so is there a way that we can shift some of that excess Nivo to some of the other members? And that's something that we're looking at, especially given that we've bought forward natural gas. Um, that would bring more pricing certainty. Next slide. I don't know if there are any, any questions on, on that, but I'm happy to go back if we need to. Sort of moving forward, we are looking at this Fremont, um, project, which is very close to where we are tonight. Um, this project is moving forward. We anticipate, and, um, Parowin has five hundred KW, about half a megawatt of entitlement. It's anticipated to come on the summer of twenty twenty-six, and it would be a hundred megawatts of solar, fifty megawatts of batteries, um, twenty-five year power purchase agreement. And so far, our experience with the developer has been very good. Um, we anticipate this would come back to governing bodies probably in, in June for further consideration. Um, but this would be a good resource in, in our minds to move forward with. Uh, next slide. Natural gas, uh, we are undertaking a siting study right now. We plan to move forward with doing more feasibility on two sites. One would be a combined cycle site. The other would be a peaking generation site. Um, this process will unfold over the course of, through the end of this calendar year. The technology that we're looking at would have the ability to fire not just with natural gas, but also with ammonia and hydrogen. And that would be a way in which we would minimize our exposure to that greenhouse gas regulation that I mentioned earlier. Um, you know, with hydrogen, you do reduce your CO2 emissions a certain amount. It's not that you have no CO2 emissions. Um, something to consider as we move forward. Um, we're likely not gonna be doing these projects in the Wasatch Front because of air permit limitations. So we are looking at more rural areas, which is good. And we're trying to find areas, frankly, that are closer to members as well. Um, Parowin would have a one percent entitlement, um, in any of the projects that we do there. And this is just their init-, this would be your initial option. You could, you know, move that around lower if need be, and we'd work with Parowin to figure out what the optimum size would be. Next slide. You know, we know things are changing as UAMPS. Uh, we've gone through and looked back at fiscal year twenty-three and gone through and exercised to see, um, you know, what we can learn from that experience because it was a very challenging experience. And we wanna make sure from a planning standpoint what we could do differently moving forward. Um, and, you know, we're identifying things like diversifying, looking at ways where, you know, and using Parowin as the example of, you know, how we can minimize that exposure to Hunter. Um, that's already happened. You know, we've already been working with Jeremy to have more forward market transaction, that's those PX transactions. So I can tell you, like, for the, like, our current fiscal year, which is fiscal year, we refer to as twenty-five, you know, you're not anticipating to have ninety percent of your power come from Hunter. It's much, much further down, um, to more like fifty percent, which is significant. Um, and that's, you know, credit working with Jeremy on that to minimize that exposure. We talked about the all requirements project that we're gonna be studying. Um, Dan mentioned the financial health checks earlier. We plan to have those out in advance of that summer conference that we'll have in August because we, we think it can be a valuable tool when you're there at the conference to talk to other city council members about, you know, what they're doing within their systems. And I think with that, that is the last slide. I'm happy to take any questions. I really appreciate the chance to be here this evening.
I've got one question about the hydro. Do you see any potential for it being increased? And then with the, if you have higher lake levels, you know how Lake Powell dropped, and they said they didn't even have, they limited their capacity of generation. And so as that increases, does the, are we able to increase? Because Parowin has an interest in, in the Glen Canyon.
Yes.
Project. So I was just curious about that. And do you see any potential for, you know, future development of hydro?
So I do not see much potential of increasing the amount of hydroelectric output out of Glen Canyon um, because the Bureau of Reclamation has to manage that with all of the environmental considerations. You know, they, they have to do what's referred to as high flow experiments where they push more water out and not necessarily the most optimal time for us to look at how that affects the ecological system down from the dam there. Um, so I, I don't think that it would be good for, prudent for us to expect more generation out of Glen Canyon. Um, just being candid about it. As far as looking at other forms of new hydro, we've looked at it in the past for the members at different spots. And recent experience is that it is very expensive, but, you know, we're always open to looking at it again and seeing what can be done. And I think there's, it's worth looking at, especially, um, smaller systems and looking at what grant opportunities there might be. There's a lot of federal grant opportunities right now. Um, you know, the hydro that y'all have currently, I think, is a very significant benefit, given the amount of production it does relative to your load. Um, but it'd be great to have some more of it if it's economic. And we certainly would help, help y'all look at that if you'd like.
How much can, uh, Parowin call back from IPP?
I don't have that number off the top of my head. It will change when it repowers. Um, but that's something that we're looking at with the members because you're basically going from eighteen hundred megawatt coal plant to a total of eight hundred and forty megawatts of natural gas. Um, so that is reducing the callback for the members. But we wanna, we wanna look at that more with the members and see if there's any additional opportunity there. Is that, you know, it's built, it's there. We should figure out how many of those electrons we can keep in Utah.
Right.
Warning, incoming loaded question.
Sure.
I give you all of the latitude you want to just plain say, I don't wanna answer.
Okay. It's quite the preference.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm recovering it.
When you hear the question, you'll understand why.
Okay.
Senate Bill one sixty-one. Um, this council did vote to make a very strong statement, send a letter to the governor. I know that this has mainly been IPP, IPA.
Mm-hmm.
Working on that. Is, does UAMPS have a seat at the table for the ongoing negotiations, which I understand are really, really, really high level? Like Speaker of the House.
Mm-hmm.
President of the Senate, Governor's office. Is, can you comment on that at all, or would you like to? Um, how is it going? Do you know? Uh, because this, this impacts our project, which I know you care about.
Yeah. Um, my current understanding is that they will take that bill back up in the interim session in May. Um, and look at it some more, um, which I think it should be looked at more. I have concerns from a precedence setting of what that bill does, um, from an air permitting standpoint. I, I think that is very concerning that you could go through an air permitting process and then that legislation effectively kind of unwinds the air permit that they went and...
Right.
Got. And I think that is very troubling.
Because, because it's a real financial potential impact on projects like Hunter. That's not a scare tactic, that's a real thing.
Yeah, and I, I would put it somewhat differently. It is concerning from a UAMPS perspective if you could have an air permit that you sought and got approved and you're developing a new project. Not that, you know, I mean, you can see the parallel. If, if we're looking at doing new natural gas and you go through the process of getting a new permit for a natural gas facility and then it can be unwind, unwound, um, that is concerning. And I think that's a bad precedent to be setting. So, um, you know, we're gonna be watching that closely, and, you know, we obviously have concerns there about the precedent and also, um, we'll be supportive of trying to figure out how we can weigh in there at the right time.
Follow-up. So are you going to belly your way into that negotiation or really let IPP defend itself? W- is, is UAMPS board really talked about how aggressive UAMPS wants to get in that discussion?
We haven't had a recent discussion on how the membership wants us to weigh in. Um, you know, it's, it's a, obviously a very political issue and, um, you know, leadership certainly had a strong perspective on getting that bill passed. I think that might be my sort of political way to say that.
Thank you.
Well, let's, let's just face it, that the political outcome this fall is gonna have a lot to do with what happens.
Yes.
I have a couple easier questions, hopefully, and you might have no answers to these.
Yeah.
But, so the Fremont, you know, it's looking good, you said, the Fremont. How much po-, and, and this is just made, some people asked me about this. How much power from that stays in Utah?
In Utah?
Yeah.
Um, that would be a very significant amount, um, because we're subscribing for all of the output from that. So the power that would go out of state is going to be, so we have, I'm just thinking through the out-of-state members, and I, I just not gonna know off the top of my head how much of those out-of-state members have signed up for. But, I mean, it's gonna be, I'm gonna, I can follow up for sure. Oh, really? Oh, yeah. Well, that's what Jackie, Jackie will help me out.
I guess that... You get a hundred percent out of that plant for all the UAMPS?
Yeah.
Okay. So it doesn't like fifty percent go to California and...
No. And I, I was thinking that Truckee Donner, one of our members that's in California, was in the project, but I think Jackie's sort of telling me now.
It's going a hundred percent to the members?
Yes.
Okay, UAMPS.
Of UAMPS, yeah.
Just the next question, just may... The soils.
Mm-hmm. Correct, yeah.
How'm leaning on China to come through?
Yeah.
I mean, is it, uh, ninety?
Eighty, eighty percent of the panels that the world relies on come from China.
Eighty percent?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it, it is very significant, and, um, we also have a very significant, reliable battery. Um, China was very aggressive in the tr- energy... Um, China was very aggressive in the tr- energy transition and building up all of the supply chain and the manufacturing for both batteries and, um, solar modules. And we're, we're playing catch-up in that space now.
And solar panels are only good for what, ten years each roughly?
I think that they're, and I can double check this. I think that, um, you know, there's gonna always, like, each year when we look at a solar project, we will anticipate a certain amount of degradation where the panel just isn't gonna be as good. Um, but I think that most of the projects that we've looked at, they don't anticipate replacing panels unless there's serious problems for twenty years. They just assume that the panels aren't operating as well as they initially were.
When, when I worked at the county, we, we looked at it from an assessment standpoint because they're personal property.
Yep.
They'll outlast their depreciation because we talked about trying to get a longer depreciation schedule on them because at like twenty years, they're still like eighty percent good. And this, these are a couple of years old numbers. That's a bit off.
Only for some, some reason I read it someplace for ten years. But that's why he would know more than.
And I, and I think that it, it's been impressive to see the technological improvements in the solar panels, so that could just be a slightly older panel that was maybe only good for ten years.
Well, that's pretty good though.
Yeah.
Have there been any studies between Chinese and American-made panels?
As far as quality?
Yeah, and longevity?
Yeah. Um, again, I think that the, they've done a really good job on the technology, the Chinese, as I understand it. Um, so the quality is, is quite good. Yeah, it's not what you wanna hear, I'm sorry, but it's, that's my understanding and they, um, we, we need to catch up and, and do more and get the domestic manufacturing where it should be. There's a lot of new domestic manufacturing that's happening, but, um, and I could follow up with some of those stats because I was just reading. We're just behind on having that capability.
So the company, or the cities that you do the, kind of the management of the resources for that we're looking into doing for Parowan City where we aren't as exposed, so let's just say we're low-risk temperament. Um, has that been successful for the cities or have you been doing that yet? Or are you just talking about doing it with diversification?
Yeah, we're, um, it would be a, a shift to do more, take over more of that planning. Um, and, you know, what's driving it is really the changes that we're seeing in all the resource mix. You know, we're, it's, we're being driven to change, which I think is an opportunity to do more in that space, planning-wise.
So you're not doing it yet?
No.
Moving toward, okay.
Yep, correct.
That's what I wasn't clear about.
Yep, sorry.
Does the council have, have any other questions for Mason? No, I just appreciate you coming in.
No, it.
Giving us the information, like really.
Did a good job, thank you.
Well, again, we appreciate, um, y'all's membership and look forward to doing more with y'all and we'll be back. And hopefully you can come up in August.
What date is that?
Jackie can tell me. It's just.
I hope it's before the fifteenth.
It's, unfortunately, and that, and my wife's a teacher, it's, yeah, it doesn't.
It's hard.
It starts, yeah.
Wow. Yeah, right?
Thank you.
It is, it is very family oriented, but I know it just doesn't really work with school.
Boo, I'm just kidding. Eighteenth.
Well, thank you and Jackie for coming, we appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
We want more.
Yeah.
More, more slides.
Yeah, more slides, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Good question by the council, thank you, that was good discussion.
Okay.
On the, on the Fremont project, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, thank you.
Good to know.
Really good to know, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now moving to item number sixteen, I'm sorry, fifteen. This is the discussion regarding the RFP for the breakwater.
Um, so this'll be a quick discussion item. Um, we'd like to go out to RFP.
Good night.
Yep.
Drive safe.
Um, we would like to put it out for bid to select a, um, I'm gonna say a partner, but find a vendor that would like to enter into an exclusive agreement for, um, extraction of sand, gravel, rock, trees, everything that comes into the breakwater, we need to get it out. This last year, um, as you know, the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three winter season and the runoff filled whatever capacity we had in there and took it all up. That capacity in there, we need to give us a little bit of a shock absorber for a flood that comes out of the canyon. So we opted this last year to basically, as long as somebody coordinated it with the city, remove as much as they wanted to and get it out of there. And it was really impressive. Of course, there was a lot of value that was there, um, in gravel, but it needed to be processed and it needed to be hauled. And, um, we had it, a significant amount of material that was taken out, opening up more of a capacity, which is the city's primary purpose is having flood mitigation there. Um, we would like to put it out for bid though. We did have some concerned citizens that were concerned about the amount of noise, the amount of dust, the amount of noise and dust at different hours. Um, we, we, we tried to kinda ke- to keep a lid on it to a degree by having them put water down. Um, they were working at hours that were not really, um, that weren't really loved by surrounding citizens. And, um, not to mention not having gates on it, it was just kind of a free-for-all. Now, that free-for-all ended up with a big hole in the ground, but it ended up with some really frustrated citizens. Um, so I think it's important that we set the expectation with those that live by, it will always be there, it always needs to be there. It literally is put there by the pioneers that helped build Parowan to protect Parowan from floods coming out of the canyon. I, I had somebody say, "Can't you just, can't you just get rid of that gravel pit and just make it a nice little park with a stream that goes through it?" And I said, "I'm so sorry to tell you this, but no, it has to be there." And the only way to get that thing empty or clean it out is by loud, expensive, heavy machinery that beeps and creates a lot of dust and noise. Now, we do want to, by part of this RFP, we will set some, um, regulations on whoever, if we do find a partner that wants to work with us. So option one is we find a single partner that wants to go in there and mine the material out. And we will say, "You can do it, you can do all of your loud, dusty, noisy work within certain hours," so that we can respect our citizens that live nearby. Um, and if you're going to be doing something that creates dust, um, I mean, if they bring a crusher in, the crusher creates dust, that's kinda hard to mitigate. What can be really mitigated is the roads that they're hauling in and out of can be watered down and things like that. Um, I would like to see some sort of better way to, um, secure the, the facility. Um, also, we, in the past, when we've done this with a, with a vendor, we, we did keep the option open that if local residents of Parowan wanted to go in and get fill material, that they had to allow the local residents to get fill material. And, and we did, we did protect the vendor to say, um, in the past Bob Evans had it. Residents can't go in and get, take material that's been already removed and processed. If they wanted to go in there and get a permit from the city, they could go get some material. We would wanna keep that in place. Um, but essentially, any commercial work in there would be restricted to one entity. So that's option A. If we do put this out to bid and we can't find somebody who wants to make a going concern out of it, because they have to remove all the material and, and all the material is not the same, is not equally valuable and they still have to deal with it, right? If we can't find somebody that's willing to do that, then we would probably move to option B, where we would still put some, um, put some, you know, like a, like a chain across with some signage and we would make people get a permit to go in and mine it. Not just an, a verbal discussion, but actually get a permit. The permit would give rules about when they can work, how they can work and so forth like that. If they don't play by the rules, we pull the permit. But just get to more of a formal system, um, and that's kinda the plan, if you guys are good with it.
And then I think it should be stated that this is gonna be a ongoing, this is gonna be in perpetuity. This is something has to happen.
Yeah.
Continuously.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's in, it's really awe-inspiring how fast that massive pit can fill up. The, just the cubic yards alone that comes out and spring runoff. Um.
But I mean, the.
It's, it's impressive.
Property owners, you don't want them to get the idea that it's just gonna be cleaned out this year and then it's good.
No, no, it's every year.
It's gonna be a ongoing every year.
And, and by the way, option C is the city has to figure out how to finance this and the city has to get the m- equipment, which is really expensive. We have to have the manpower, which we're paying them, um, hours. And it's, it's not, it's not a, it's not a cheap thing, which means the only way that we make that a go is by we sell it, which means we get into the business of, of, of doing gravel and sand and things like that, which means we're now competing with the private sector. And finally, the very last piece of that is, um, we have to have, find, we have to find somewhere that can't sell. And really, if we can find a partner, it can be a win-win. If not, it, it very well could be a, an expensive thing.
Or you're gonna be back on the track.
Hey, I would love nothing more than run, you're gonna have to teach me how to run a dozer. I've only driven a dozer twice, but.
Oh, yeah, like we know.
What have I been asking, guys? Why have I been asking? I want to learn how to drive the big machinery.
Yeah.
So this will move then to the next meeting for action.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, does, we don't need an action item to, to do an RFP.
We can just, oh, we can just open it.
I really wanted to tell you guys that we're gonna do an RFP and get your support. It's more administrative, but we're gonna bring the, the agreement to you to sign when we do it. At that point, it needs action.
Thank you. Okay, reports, updates and all business follow-up. Um, the council would like to start or would you like to start from planning and zoning? Cause I know you wanted to say something, Larry.
Good evening, everybody. So there's an opportunity for training coming up, yet another one, um, that should have some real benefits if any of you are able to attend. So it's the, uh, let me think, American Planners Association, the Utah branch. And that training will be March eighth, ninth and tenth.
You mean May?
May, thank you.
May.
Um, and it's gonna be in, uh, Las Vegas. No, I'm kidding, really. It's gonna be in Cedar, it's gonna be in Cedar City. And so there's not a lot of travel involved. I know that three days is a lot of time to give up, especially if you have a full-time job. Um, I've looked at the schedule just a little bit, I mean, just really glanced at it. There's some fun topics on housing and, um, short-term rentals. There's a, oh, one, some of you may have already attended one of those. It's a good one, especially if you're a new council member and haven't been to that. It's a great opportunity and they're gonna give you a free book if you.
That's what I was just gonna say, they gave us a free book.
Yes, that's that one. These are all top-notch speakers. They're all pretty much, uh, Utah folks. A lot of them are from up north, but they're the ones that are working with the legislative bodies and so on to put things in place. So the real question is, it's about fifty bucks a piece if we get registered quick. We're trying to send some planning and zoning members. We've got a couple signed up, we're hoping for a couple more. And I'm wondering if Dan and any of you, uh, can commit to attending those training sessions.
I'll go.
Pardon? So there's one.
And I'll go.
Two, three. Okay, the other thing that I would say is the, the way it's laid out. The, the way it's laid out, these sessions are about an hour apiece and some of them are spread out, so you can probably skip some of them that, that aren't particularly.
Do you know like the hours? Like the.
Their A website, if you just go to APA Utah Spring Conference.
Okay.
You can look at the full agenda and it, and who the speakers are. It's pretty extensive. It, it's three days and if they're hour apiece, that's like twenty-four different speakers. So, uh, it's pretty good. But I noticed one of them is like a tour of SUU. I, I think that'd be interesting. I'm not sure how interest, if I am in it, but to some people, that might be interesting.
If you want a tour, I'll get you a tour. I know people.
Well, there you go. Not yet. But thank you. The Natural History Building, maybe, how about that? So I, I have three from the council that are.
Well, if, if you have a room, I'll go.
There's four, okay.
So it says registrations purchased between April twenty-sixth and May third will have a fifty dollar late fee added. Does that mean we need to buy them tonight?
Pretty much, yeah. And I was just made aware of the conference. Somebody from Vision Iron County sent it to me, David Best, today and said, "Hey, did you know about this conference?" I mean, I don't know how we're supposed to know about all these things. So I sent it out to Larry and Keith and Keith said he'd go. But yeah, it's fifty dollars if we get registered before midnight. Otherwise, we have to add fifty dollars, so it's a lot more if we're gonna send people. And I said I'd be a flex person on, if somebody is, um, not sure, I'll go if there's a spot and I won't go if there's not a spot. And it sounds like that's the same. Done quite a few of these trainings, you know, when I looked at the agenda, we just got out of Utah League of Cities and Towns. We already heard quite a few of these speakers. Um, we've been to the land use training, um, twice or two different meetings. So I'm a flex person if he's a flex person, but I know Keith wants to go, Larry wants to go. He's got two planning and zoning people. It would be great if the two of you go because it's exposure to so much information. And I would say you can almost, um, à la carte it because you can go through, like, they probably don't wanna have a tour, maybe John does, but David probably doesn't. But just making assumptions, but you could probably take those three days and just go to the ones that you want to. And since it's at SUU, it's pretty accessible to us. If we need to leave early for other meetings or things like that.
Remember you have the May ninth.
Dan, so we're wondering if you want to attend?
Yeah, it, it will cost more for me. Um, it's fifty dollars for the citizen planners.
Right.
Um, for, if we're a member of APA, and I don't know if we are. I think for staff, it'll cost more. I'm just looking to see where we're at budget-wise, but, but, yeah, I'll look at it tonight and I'd like to. Even if it's a, I attend this class and not that class and so forth, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, we'll start with the council unless any of our staff have anything else. Okay, we'll start with you, Councilman Burton.
Um, I'm gonna let council member Toppen report on the planning zoning because I didn't attend, I was at the, oh, League of Cities and Towns Conference. Um, I don't think we've had any other meetings other than, I just wanna, tell me if I'm wrong, but report that the date of the, I guess, the, uh, pool date opening, the hopeful date is the Memorial Weekend. Is that correct, Dan?
That's our plan. We have hired a new pool manager, Shelby Bartlett. And our last year's pool manager is going to be hired, but will be extremely minimal hours. She's helping us get up and running and will be in a support role only. And we're shooting for May, um, we have a few things that need to be done before then, so. But it, but fingers crossed, we're gonna get that thing open, so. We'll have a, we're gonna do an update on the pool, um, in an, in a council or two with, with some good information.
I was up there today because the Public Works guys and Stephen were up there working and I just looked around and there are some things that needs to be done, but believe me, it's, looks night and day from last year.
Yeah, this time last year, there was a big dirt hole surrounding a bathtub looking thing.
Yeah, so, I mean, it, it looked positive. I mean, I was excited, I went around and looked and there, it, it's manageable. And it'll happen, it'll happen. I'm just trying to look here at the date, that's the, I guess, the twenty-fifth of May is a Saturday, so whatever. And then the, um, so just so everybody can get excited, um, the, uh, Recharge Project is moving forward. We have that meeting bi-weekly or bimonthly, sorry. And, um, there, there, you know, we reviewed a lot of, I mean, Dan will probably expand on it, but there, we reviewed, there's a lot of the design and the, the, uh, the direction for maybe with the, the route for all the, you know, the system, the pipeline and things. So really looks good. I'm excited because it's moving forward. That's, that's happening, so that's a great, that is so, I think if everybody could understand how important that is and that to the city and the citizens and a lot of projects hinge on that, the bridge and farmers. The bridge and farmers are excited and if you can get farmers excited, you have succeeded, so. They want that diversion moved and if you can get them all in agreement on a water project, I just can't even believe it. So, kudos to Dan and everybody.
I, I won't bring it up later, so I just wanted to add, I don't know if we told everybody, but, um, the Parowan Pumpers, Jason Bradshaw, they got an additional million dollar grant. I don't know if everybody knew that. So we have about three million in funds so far, um, which is just amazing. This time last year, what we put in the budget to spend was seven hundred and fifty, thinking that we were gonna have to take a phased approach. Um, three million may not be enough to get us there, but it will be enough to get us ninety percent accomplished. We may have to borrow the difference, but. I just wanna echo Dave's excitement for it. We're moving forward. Things are looking really good. There's, there's gonna be challenges, um, utility conflicts.
But they're manageable, doable, it's-
Crossing UDOT roads.
Yeah.
But it's looking good. All the slopes work. All, the concept, now that actual engineers are looking at the design, they're saying, "Yeah, this, this is great. This works." We're not finding out like, "What are you thinking?" That's never gonna work. Instead, they're like, "Yeah, this, this is great."
Never heard one negative thing.
Well, I was gonna say, Dan said one particular farmer who I would, never would think this word would be associated with was tickled.
Mm. (laugh) Was tickled. Well, yes, I'll just have to add that. You, you're, you're doing great things when you can have a tickled farmer.
(laugh).
All right. Okay, I'm, that's it.
I had power board and we pretty much talked about the power board meeting here. So that's, that was it. But can I give a shout out to Brad? Since he's gonna retire.
Did you wanna t- did you wanna come to the microphone?
Make you need to come up and-
Speech Brad.
Thank you. Speech, speech.
State your name.
Brad Raymond. I work for the Parowan City Power Department. Uh, scary times and exciting times. It's been great to work here and still gonna be seen around and I appreciate everything the city's done for me.
We appreciate what you've done.
It's, it's, uh, gonna be a change (laugh) at night.
It'll be a good change. Retirement's good.
It's scary. I never thought I'd-
It's both.
When I told Dan and Molly a few or three weeks ago, I was like, oh, it just, and Callie them asked me how I was doing and I was just like, this feels weird.
(laugh).
But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you Brad for what you've done.
Thank you Brad.
Well Brad, you can have the farmer's retirement plan. They plant ya.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you Sharon.
Retirement's a beautiful thing, by the way. That's why I told you, you know, can't complain. Um, I'll make my list real short because, you know, we don't wanna be here all night. And so I, re- as I, I went to Utah Lakes of Cities and Towns and on Thursday and Friday it was great. You know, I, I learned, uh, moralists, so that's always a good thing to learn. Um, and then, uh, went to the budget meeting yesterday and it was a great meeting. We still have, we went through about half of the budget, another half, and, uh, so I'm looking forward to that. Once again, you know, this is all new to me. Let's see. And did discuss our parks and cemetery. Looking beautiful. That's all I can say. That's it.
Can I thank you for the positive positivity on social media?
Yep.
Um, there's so much negative out there and it's just good to see.
Yep.
Some positives. So, keep up the, keep doing what you're doing.
Positive brings positive, negative brings negative.
Yes, so I just wanted to point that out. Keep up the good work.
Philosophy in life. Hey, while we're throwing kudos, John called the Public Works guys the other day. Sharon brings in treats all the time for the office. Those things really go a long way. They really do. I much wanna thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hint, hint, no, I'm totally joking. I'm totally joking. (laugh).
I know staff meetings Monday.
All I had was power board meeting and we already went over that, so that's all I had.
Thank you. Okay. So first I did, I don't even know what came first, the theater board meeting. We put in place, we, meaning they, put in place, um, their president, vice president and secretary. So Jennifer Terry is their president again going forward. Aubrey Tuttle will be their vice president and then Kami Cox is the secretary. And they have committed to getting a yearly schedule to Callie so that she knows. We're working, I'm trying to train them. It's hard to untrain habits that are already in place. So we're working towards it. We're working towards it. So, um, they talked about, um, how well Bright Star did and, um, just thanked everybody that participated and helped with that. And, um, they did make a little bit of money on that, which was good, which was really good. Um, they are, well, they are, as in Jennifer Terry is doing June third through July twenty-seventh. She's booked out the theater and they're doing the, um, community, like the children's theater and they're gonna do Shrek. And so that should be fun. And then Jet just went through, basically almost every weekend is booked through the theater with homeschool groups and, and such like that. Um, they, next month, they do wanna bring on the agenda, um, about possibly raising the fee to rent out the theater because they are using, people who rent it are using a lot of, uh, like toilet paper, paper towels, stuff like that. So that'll be on an agenda which, they'll put that on agenda item, then I'll have to bring it here because we'll have to put it in the fee schedule and vote on all of that stuff too, so. I'll just let you know how that, how that goes. Um, I did do planning and zoning for Councilmember Burton and it's fun to do different things every now and again. I learn a lot, so.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Um, they did approve the Rasmussen, hopefully I'm saying that right, equipment sales. They did approve that conditional use permit contingent on the removal of those storage containers off of that property. So once that-
They're moved.
Oh, they are removed now?
Yes.
Yeah, they were supposed to be, been removed by Tuesday, so, and I just haven't driven down.
I was sent a picture of them being removed, so they have been removed.
Oh, you were. I'm glad that they've been removed. Um, they talked a lot about the subdivision administrative land use authority and who should be on that. I don't know if that's really been, did you guys do, vote on that? On who's actually gonna be on it?
No.
Though it was a discussion of that. I think it's still in process.
Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be officially modified as we modify all of our subdivision code, which we have a grant for with, um, Hanson Planning Group. But w- the, the city needs to decide who our authority is and, and that's something that Hanson Planning Group is not gonna do for us. So we needed to have it, had a good discussion about it. Um, kind of, it's looking like the planning commissions, I think there was even a recommendation that we consider doing and a vote, that we have a three-person commit, um, committee and some things like that. In- involving staff and, and a planning commission chairman and things like that, so. That'll eventually come to you guys.
And also with the master transport, tan- transportation plan process discussion, they're having the open house. I think all of you guys are aware, but just so that the public is aware, open house is on April thirtieth, which is next Tuesday. I believe it'll be right in here at six PM. So, and then I think we've beat the school thing with a stick, so, um, I just, again, thank our officers for all their time and cooperation and helping us down there at the school and, and all of that, so I appreciate you guys.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just confused because we didn't mention Arbor Day and that'll be-
Oh, yeah.
Shade Tree Committee.
Tuesday, Tuesday.
John, you dropped the ball.
Oh, I know.
Like, I'm ser- seriously.
John, isn't it Monday?
Where's my notes?
I just went through my calendar and I thought it was on our city calendar, but that's why I asked John. I thought he might know. Does anyone know when Arbor Day is?
I was told it was, uh-
April twenty-
April twenty-ninth.
It's-
Also, it's the same day as our, oh, the day before, so it's Monday.
Yeah, it's Monday.
Monday.
Monday at (cough)
Twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty, okay. At the big tree in front of the library, okay.
And that up at the, yeah.
The big tree in front of the library.
Main Street Park, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Main Street, up by the library.
Hmm, seeing you putting me on the spot some more. Um, (cough) the schools are gonna be coming over in different shifts and doing a program, handing out, um, bookmarksers and, um, things like that. They'll have, hmm, (cough) it's not, it's not looking good for me right now, but (cough), um, probably shouldn't announce this earlier, so, so, (cough) I'll let everybody know. I'll put a little thing on Facebook too, on the activities, times, but yeah, the school children are coming over. They're gonna be explaining what Arbor Day is and, and actually, um, we do have some new trees we're gonna be planting. Not a whole bunch, but, yeah, tru- tree, not a whole bunch, but we do have, I think, five or six new trees be planted. And, um, so, you'll see that tomorrow.
You're great.
Almost.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, I have a few things. I'll be quick. Um, it, the budget was alluded, alluded to. Um, we, we've had all the budget hearings with all the department heads. We've had our work meeting, one. We're gonna have another work meeting on Tuesday. At that point, we should wrap up the work meetings. We'll have a com- compiled tentative budget, which will be filed, which will be at that point a public document that people can look at. And, and we'll, we'll bring, um, bring that to the public to discuss or to present for inspection, for public hearings and anything. Um, so that's moving forward well. Uh, the flood channel, if you may notice, the flood channel is running. Uh, we did go ahead and shut, uh, the roads on six hundred west. Um, and what's that? I know. We, we have some, we, we may, we may change the city's approach to that, um, opening and closing of that in the future. Uh, we're looking at some options, talking with our insurance company and so forth. But for the time being, it is shut. It was running quite high the other day. Um, we, we live with this thing. We will live with this for, from now on. We always have lived with that flood channel. Um, and its erosion and things. There was a lot of riprap that was put in over the winter.
Unless we divert it the other way, Dan.
Which way?
The recharge project.
Right, no, but I'm saying the flood channel though. I mean, you're right, water will go, but floods will always go down that way.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we're, we are continuing to, um, look at improving that to the point where it does not become a, a liability. We did, we did a fair amount of riprap, um, but we are going to continue to work on that. Um, pickleball, uh, i- is, is still moving forward. We needed to ins- we need to install a, a city water line. Um, it's my understanding that pipe has been ordered. We're just, it'll be, you'll see that out there. We'll be installing that, um, in the next little bit. I need to work with our new Public Works Director as we, and our old Public Works Director and get that scheduled. We had to take a pause from a lot of our projects to turn on the PI system and react to all of the fun that that comes with. Um, but you'll be seeing pipe go in the ground pretty quick and then we'll do our grading. Bike Park, we're still, um, working with, um, Mayor, um, Todd from Paragona to finalize design work. Then we'll, we'll hire, um, a surveyor to go out and stake it and then we'll start working on that as well. That's moving forward. Um, y- I, you may, you may have heard my, uh, public comment at the first, talking about the library. I really hope this community will get behind our library. We have some pretty tough days ahead, um, for our library and their staff. Their hearts are really, um, they're really, they're really reeling right now. Um, we will have some limited hours. We only have a single full-time person. The other hours that we, that we deal there, we plug with part-time people, which have other jobs. And so when we have our full-time person out, it becomes very difficult to manage a to- a full-time hours. So we did just today post temporary hours, um, including, we will be closed on Wednesdays and Fridays. We're g- we're trying to plug that hole in our staffing as soon as we can, including our part-time people are going to be, um, making more hours available. And we posted today a part-time position so we can get another person in the loop so that we can, um, we wanna get back up to normal hours as soon as possible. I just ask the public to be patient. And more than that, just let's get behind our, our library staff and let's, 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 let's have this be one of our shining moments rather than what I was talking about in public comment. I failed to get to that point in my talks, cause I got emotional. I think this is where we can really sh- we can really shine. I just ask for everybody to be patient and, and support our library staff. And finally, uh, we got bids. Um, we still are waiting for two of them to come in to do the work on the door. Um, the emergency egress door on the north side of this building, which is in this budget. Um, and we will, it's not big enough that it'll need to come i- to this body to get approved, but, um, we'll select a, a person and get that done before this budget year is done. So we're just gonna cut in a door. It looks just like that one right there, only we're gonna put it so the whole north side of the building can evacuate in an emergency. Right now, we would probably, could potentially have a problem. So that's why that was done and getting moving forward on the bids. So that's all the things I have, Mayor.
Okay, just a couple of things. The National Day of Prayer is on Thursday, May second. It's at eleven o'clock at the Parowan Library flagpole. It's sponsored by the Parowan Area Interfaith Council and it's a really wonderful event. Um, it's, it's a tradition that is really worth coming out to if you're available at that time. Um, we, I didn't know if we wanted to touch base a little more, but just preparing for the meeting for Tuesday night, um, which is gonna be our open house. There was a question on Facebook about, is it already done? And are we just coming to hear it? And no, it's time for public interaction, feedback on that. It's in draft form. It is, you know, it's well, it's f- far along, but it's definitely, this is the time for the open house and the public to come in and, and comment.
Can I say one thing on that?
Mm-hmm.
There is an existing transportation plan. Um, I don't want people to look at the, look at the plan and say, "Wow, you're, you're impacting me." There's an existing plan. This is just tweaking it and updating it. It hasn't been done since two thousand one or two.
Mm-hmm.
It was extremely old and it needed to be modified, but it will affect property owners.
Mm-hmm.
The, the existing plan affects property owners. The, the modifications will affect people slightly different. Um, we have to have a plan. It's the only way to have a successful community, but we, we do wanna have input. And, and if there's a, if there's a major problem with the plan, that's why this open house is there, to get that input. But I just hope people don't think, "Oh, they're trying to do this for tha-" there's the conspiracies that come out. Um, but, but if there's a real concern about something, we wanna hear it before it's adopted, right?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, we probably won't get near the input we actually need. It'll be after the fact. When did they do that? And it's like, "Well, we, we had an open house. We noticed it as much," so it, so share it, get people there if they're, if they, if you can get them out on a Tuesday night.
So Dan, will there be somebody actually do presentation or?
Yeah, Jones and DeMille will be here, um, with a presentation and to answer questions. We'll have maps laid out, um.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if there'd just be maps laid out, but you'll be somebody actually ex-
Yeah, they'll be here. I don't know if they have a, a formal presentation or if it's just answering questions, letting people look at the maps, draw lines and things like that. I don't, I don't know. I haven't been through one of their. I've been through these, just not one that they've done, so.
Um, to follow up from our last council meeting where we were looking at a more robust website and communication method for the public and with, with a company that came and did their presentation, which we all got really excited to do the setup on it and the annual. It's gonna be quite a bit more, so we are kind of going back to the drawing board on that. I just wanted to follow up, but we're gonna try to figure out, you know, what tools are out there, uh, that we could use for free to maybe do what we need to do. But I would say, you know, as community, uh, share the positives and let's get the word out on things and you've all done a great job. Everyone that's still here does a great job with kinda keeping the community informed and that really helps. Um, I jokingly, after the thing that happened where the building got a training in it and then everybody was like, "What is that?" And it was probably within an hour that the answers were online and I joked with Sharon, cause we were on our way to UAMs, that that's kind of our live channel is the Parowan Uncensored, which is good and bad, but let's use it in a good way because people do go there to immediately find out what that is. And so, you know, there are positive ways to use these places that people go to to find information and I appreciate everyone's efforts in doing that. Um, the last thing is, we did have, well, two things.
Um, so we've had quite a few over the years and I've even been involved just as a citizen to try to figure out the sidewalk on two hundred from Maple Springs and Stillwater. And we did have a meeting, we had Public Works there, we had, um, some of the people that are property owners and, uh, others. And we did kinda work through a process on that, went out and checked out the site and tried to figure out how to do it. UDOT was there. And, um, so we do think we're gonna be able to do that sidewalk and that was really good news because we know that that is where a lot of our young families live, are in those neighborhoods. And when the summer comes, those kids are on their bikes trying to get to the pool, trying to get to the gas stations to get candy and drinks and, you know, it's getting to a point where we do have construction vehicles and a lot of traffic on that road. And the kids don't wanna ride through the goat heads and pop, and pop their tires. So, just be aware that we are making progress on that and I do feel a positive, uh, direction, not just talking about it, but I do think we're gonna be able to get somewhere. Um, another quick thing is I did spend some time today with our rec director, Anna. We talked through some things she's working on, which was really great, summer softball and things like that. So, watch for signups, create teams, um, all those good things. And then we did send Marshall Evans out to look at our scoreboards because I didn't even know that they weren't working. Um, it's been a while since I've had a, a kid out there playing, playing baseball and, um, softball. We, I don't think we've even had for a long time. But if we can get that program going, it's gonna be really neat to have summer softball in, in, for all, all ages this summer out there as a recreational addition to what we do in our community for fun. Um, and I think that's all I have. And so, at this time, if there are no other updates, um, we need to move into a closed session. So, I need the council to make a motion to do that. And we will be discussing, um, I have my marked up one. We will, um, be going for specific purposes, which are allowed under the Open and Public Meetings Act and it includes discussions regarding, um, the purchase, exchange, lease or sell of real property and the character of professional competence, physical, mental health of an individual. And that motion will be, need to be made by roll call vote.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or sell of real property litigation, the character of professional competence or physical, mental health of an individual. Is that good?
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, we'll start on this end.
Rochelle Hoppen, aye.
Dave Harris, aye.
John Dean, aye.
Sharon Downey, aye.
David Burton, aye.
All right, thank you for coming out.
Thank you for coming and staying.
Good night.